Okay, good morning. Good morning. It is 9:33. It's 9:33 and I'll call this morning of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order, and please ask our clerk to call the roll to establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Okay, good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And Kennedy is absent for the day, and you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 25th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment, prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their right, excuse me, waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda item. Clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting, and you may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you Flo. I'd invite everyone in chambers to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So we will now go to off-agenda public comments, and for those of you who have been here many times, excuse me for repeating myself, but for those of you who have not been here, what we've done with off-agenda public comments, which is a chance to comment on something that is not specifically on the agenda for the day, either consent or timed, we try to keep the agendized matters close to the time that we dedicate on the agenda. So limiting off-agenda comments for only the first minutes of the meeting, and then if there are additional folks with off-agenda comments to make, they can come back and make those at the end of the time matters for the day. And I think that's been working pretty well, and sometimes running these meetings is more of an art than a science. So we just try to work through these things to kind of stay on schedule while still allowing everyone the opportunity to speak. So before we get to off-agenda public comment, Madam Clerk, how many do we have signed up for off-agenda?
Currently, right now, we have 22.
22 signed up.
So we have about 24 minutes of comments.
So that's phone and in-person?
Correct.
Okay, so, and I'm okay being a little flexible, obviously, with the times. If we can get through everybody, that's obviously more convenient. If we can get through everybody, you know, in the morning, certainly for all of you who want to offer off-agenda. So why don't we start with off-agenda, and after the first, I'll give a couple more minutes for people to sign up for off-agenda public comment, and then I'll have you close the queue for both in-person and on the phone in a few moments after we take the first few speakers. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our first off-agenda comment will be Bernetta.
And another thing I would ask, as you see your name on the list here, maybe just be ready after the person in front of you is wrapping up their public comments, be ready to get up and take your turn at the podium. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Bernetta Heron. I work for IHSS, and I've been working there for 30, about 30 years, been working with the company. And I just would like to give a little input about what I really do and who I am for these people that I work for. I've been family members to them. I've been their confidant, supervisors, I've been, I just, about everything. And I've even been from life to death with them, where they have died in my arms. And I would just like to say that, you know, what we do, you really can't put a price on it, but if we did, we sure would like to make it to that $20 an hour, because we do everything. I have clients that I have not worked for, for maybe five or six years, and they still call me, and I still go, because that's who I am. And because of the compassion that God has given me for these people, I think I'm worth a little bit more than what I'm being paid for. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernetta.
Hello, my name is Jessica Murphy, and I've been an IHSS provider since I've been 21 years old. My husband was born in a wheelchair, still in a wheelchair, and together we have four beautiful children, 15, 11, three, and two. My two youngest are over there. We have been community activists since I was 20 years old. Here in Sacramento, we have 35,000 IHSS recipients who are authorized to receive in-home care. This amounts to nearly 10,000 seniors and over 25,000 disabled people in our community authorized to receive care. Yet this board, all three of you who are not looking at me, has made it clear that you do not value me or the people behind me and the dignity of thousands of people in Sacramento who need care by delaying at the bargaining table for nine months. Civil disobedience needs to happen, and I want that on public confidence. I've birthed two children, that takes nine months. Authorizing a 36% wage increase for yourself, and you have shown IHSS providers and recipients, and the Sacramento community at large, the care of public safety are not priorities. Did you know that we anticipate gaining at least 1,500 new authorized IHSS consumers each year? The population of those needing care is growing exponentially, but the county is not prepared to handle it. Last year, more than 2,000,000 authorized care hours went unused because consumers cannot find IHSS providers to perform the essential life-saving care they need. The problem will only continue to grow as the population of people authorized to receive care grows. But this board has the power to address it now and the issues at the roots by funding the social safety net, investing in home care, and paying IHSS providers a livable wage. I deserve a living wage. I am human, I am right here. Without a strong contract, your strong check is BS, providers a livable wage, more and more people in Sacramento will fall through the cracks and become unhoused. The power to protect our community and seniors and disabled folks lies with you. All it takes is the bargaining and good faith, and IHSS providers passing a strong contract. I want to say thank you, but it is a no thank you. Please give us a contract!
Thank you, Jessica.
Charles.
Good morning.
Good morning. So on the, Jesus, sorry, the Hope for Sacramento website, it's my actual phone number, so I get calls from homeless people that are looking for services. And typically, these are people that have gone to page 10 of Google. They're really desperate at the point that they're calling me. Nothing on our website says we offer anything, we're just advocating for stuff. So the calls I get are from people that are really desperate. Over the past couple weeks, the people I'm getting calls from, the people that I've been going and seeing, are typically families, women with children, dads with kids, whole families with kids. And school started, and people like this are still getting asked to move, or you got, the sheriffs aren't sweeping them, the park rangers aren't sweeping them, it might be other city police. But it's just something worth being aware of, that we're still moving kids around after school started, and they're losing their ability to go to school. Though they have the right to stay in the school district that they're from, it becomes impossible for them to actually get to school. They end up having to try to take light rail and city buses and stuff. So just be aware that that's happening, and that we need to do something. If we can't offer these families shelter, hotel vouchers, get them into Section 8 faster, we can't sweep them, we can't move them, because then the kids lose their ability to go to school. And that's the only real stability they have left in their life, is the school that they were attending. So be aware of that, just think of that. And then the other thing I want to say is that I'm happy that you guys have opened the tiny home villages. I'm happy that it's finally getting going, at least the one on foreign. Obviously, I have some philosophical disagreement with it, and I think funding-wise, it's not going to be able to last, especially because the sheds are going to need to get replaced every 10 years or so, and I think they're halfway into that at this point. I think it was seven years, was the county engineer that I talked to, said they last about seven years. I hope they succeed. I know I've had conversations with all you guys about how crappy I think they are, but I do hope they succeed. And, you know, let me know if there's anything you guys want out of me or Hope for Sacramento, just try to help that along, anything we can do, try to get services together, anything like that.
Thank you, Charles.
Sharon.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Sharon DeCessi. I've been an IHSS provider for my significant other for over 14 years. I decided to join the IHSS workforce in 2009 to take care of my partner. We had to make a difficult decision to significantly reduce our income so that I could take care of Michael. He's the person I take care of full-time. It was challenging, but it was a necessary choice, and over the years, our family has learned to manage the complicated impact the IHSS system, provider poverty, poverty wage, poverty level wages, sorry about that. My family is constantly making budget-cutting decisions on whether or not we can have fresh fruits and vegetables. I've brought this up to you before. I'm reduced now to doing canned foods, fruits and vegetables, which is not healthy according to every doctor and nutritionist out there, and I want to be able to buy fresh fruits and vegetables, and I can't. Most directly that impacts myself and my client is that we live in a one-bedroom apartment that we share with a roommate, because the amount of rent is outrageous in California and also in Sacramento County. It is unbelievably high, the cost of living in Sacramento. My family is not just unique. In fact, 73% of surveyed IHSS providers in Sacramento report that sometimes are always being late on their rent or mortgage payments. That's just a sad comment on what's going on right now. You've displayed your understanding of the cost of, the rising cost of essential goods like food, rent, and today's economy through the equity adjustment that you recently received yourselves. We're asking for the same respect. You've delayed the bargaining process. We want to be able to have a good bargaining process, we want to have a good, a good livable wage. We're asking you to please keep the wages in mind when you do this, and also any training that we can do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sharon.
Bernadette.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bernadette Walton. I apologize if I keep looking down at my paper. Good morning, everyone. My name is Bernadette Walton, and I'm an IHSS provider to my amazing nine-year-old daughter, who is a child with autism. I am blessed that the IHSS program has provided me the opportunity to stay home and care for my daughter and my two other children. While this program is a blessing, it also came at a significant financial cost to my family. Before I started, before I started providing care for my daughter through IHSS, I was a behavior technician for children with autism. In that role, I made $2.25 more an hour, more than I do now. For some, this may not seem significant, but for a family of five in Sacramento, every penny counts. What baffles me as an IHSS provider and as a mother of a child with autism, is that I still do the same work and tasks that I did in my previous role as a behavior technician. But now I make significantly less while doing the same amount and skill level of work, with no opportunity for promotions, raises, or professional development. Don't get me wrong, I wouldn't change my decision if I had the chance. Getting the care for my daughter, knowing that she'll receive the skilled care she requires, calms my mind. But other providers in situations similar to mine don't have the training opportunities or the wages necessary to help them gain and maintain the skills to fully care for a child with autism. This board needs to realize that the work we do is highly skilled, requiring in-depth knowledge about various conditions that hold great value. The board needs to train providers to hold these skills and this knowledge, and it needs to pay providers what their skills are worth. The additional funding for training and livable wages in our next contract will empower providers and consumers alike to live dignified lives. Please invest in this program and training and the wages for IHSS providers. Thank you in advance for all your support, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernadette.
Ryan.
Ryan, can you please make your way to the podium?
I am, aren't I?
I'm going to start your time.
Sorry if I didn't get enough for everybody. Copies is kind of expensive. I know Kenny Patrick's missing again, and I'm sure someone from his district is missing again, because he does have the highest death rate, and he continues not to show up. All right. You guys can't look, you guys set aside this time for these people, and yet you can't even look at them for the time you set aside for them, so don't mind if I don't look at you guys. You guys, turn the first three pages, I'll give you the quick explanation of it, and then you guys can read it from 51.
Ryan, Ryan, address the board.
Are you going to stop my time? You interrupted me.
Address the board, please.
I am. You can't hear me?
Thank you.
You didn't say face the board.
Turn and address the board, please.
Where is that written that I have to do that?
Because these are public comments. These are public comments.
The public is here.
The record is not made unless you're talking towards the microphone.
All right, so, again, this first comment, you're going to see the note from the doctor stating that she was requesting all my records in the letter in the front. You'll see that he said that I'm crazy for saying that. You're going to see another note that says Ryan's never been placed on 5150 hold, nor has I needed to be.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Your time is up. Thank you.
No, you interrupted me on my time.
Ryan, Ryan, you are disrupting the proceedings, Ryan. I'm asking you to please step away from the podium.
But why are you able to disrupt my time? Why don't you follow your rules? That's what we're here for, y'all not following y'all rules.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
This is a prime example of it.
Next time, if you'd like to, please pass those out ahead of time, and then you can be a third time.
Next time, if you'd like to pause my time when you talk.
Ryan, I'm going to say for the second time, you're disrupting the proceedings.
Just say for a third time.
Please step away from the podium.
I'm still here. I will step away when I decide to. Thank you. And now I decide to. It's about how much time you took for me.
Thank you.
Think that, think about that.
Wesley.
Yes, I was promised that my presentation would be put up, and if not, I could slide down the agenda until you have it.
We do not have a presentation through Metro Cable. If you have some handouts, you may put them on the display screen right there.
I sent the board to Amanda, my presentation, she said it would be available.
Okay, that has to go through the chair's office.
There it is.
They put it up.
They did, okay.
Boom, there it is.
Sacramento Bar. Here's my contract with Sacramento Park and Recs. I have a parking pass. Next slide, please.
You can turn the slide yourself there.
Oh, next. Okay, we'll skip that one. About 10 years ago, the sprinkler irrigation system in Sacramento Bar has started to fail, and five years ago, it quit working altogether. And so Sacramento Bar is basically a dead thing. The trees don't see any maintenance, there's dead branches everywhere, there's potholes, the ground has become rough. There's no less than eight stumps in the park, because when a tree dies, they basically come in, they take away the tree, leave the stump. Whoever painted this doesn't like their job very much. I mean, if you're going to go edge to edge, top to bottom, that'd be nice, but this person apparently doesn't like their job very much. So, let's compare and contrast. Basically, up on the upper left is El Manto, Sunrise Recreation in the lower right, then River Bend, William Pond. Sacramento Bar is in the same class of parks, and yet it is a disaster. And I would hope that the board would at some time in the future, maybe put together a consent item, a letter, to send down to Park and Rec and say, what's going on with Sacramento Bar, and when are you going to fix it? And when is it going to look like these other guys? And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, before we get to the next, do we have any additional public comments or off-agenda that signed up since we started? Are we still at the same?
You know what? I'm so sorry. Did we have new people? I didn't keep a track. I'm talking to my staff. Okay, yeah, so we had two additional, so can I close it now at this point?
Yeah, close it now. Let's close it now for both in-person and on the phone. Thank you. And we'll get through these. So, Robin. Please come. Thank you, Robin. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going, I have a little bit of a softer approach. This is my first meeting. I've been a IHSS worker since 2017, so I'm just here to let you guys know that I actually enjoy, it's rewarding for me. And I take care of a woman who's a double amputee, and another woman who's a two-time stroke survivor. So I just wanted, I know you guys know that we are busy. There's a burnout, sometime we get burnt out. Wages, hiring the wages would be excellent. I travel to work, I meet doctors, I meet occupational therapists, I've met physical therapists, I know doctors in Kaiser. It's just rewarding. And I know I can take this further, but what I do is rewarding. I can't even leave my clients, I'm so embedded in what I do. They depend on me, companionship, and I know, I hear a lot of frustration in here, and you know, I don't, I don't, I have frustration with, you know, personal things, burnt out and things like, but nothing like, I love my job. And I just wanted to tell you guys, I love the job. Having a raise would be great, because it's very busy. It's like, busy, busy, and a lot comes with it. And I have children, I have a daughter at home I'm taking care of, and so it's a lot coming with it. So I just wanted to say thank you, and please raise the wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Andrea.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Johnson, and I am also an employee of IHSS. I'm a licensed vocational nurse. I've worked with infectious disease control, I've worked with wound care, and I can no longer work in that position. And the reason why I cannot is because I have a severely disabled son. I previously worked with IHSS as well, in Santa Clara County, and having a child who has a severe disability, who is now an adult, has been, it's been a real struggle. I had to leave my profession and go into work with IHSS for the sole reason that I can't find a qualified provider. There's such a turnover in providers. And part of the reason for that is because they're not even getting the same respect and the same pay as people working at McDonald's. Do you know how ridiculous that is? These people out here, including myself, could make more working at a McDonald's in Sacramento County than they could taking care of our elderly and our disabled. I don't think that's right. My son gets 376 hours a month because of the severity of his disability, but yet, I can't work outside the home. I can't contribute outside of the home and work with other people, because I can't find anybody else to do it. So I'm forced to do it, all on my own. My husband had passed away, so I am the sole provider for three children. How am I supposed to make it? If you can't give these people, including myself, the wages that we deserve in order to pay our bills, how can it continue? I mean, think about it. The disabled and our children, that's who you're taking qualified people from. We deserve a living wage. We really do.
Thank you.
Desiree.
Good morning. My name is Desiree Rojas. I'm the president of Labor Council for Latin American Advancement Sacramento Chapter. We're tied to both Nationals AFL-CIO and Change to Win. And listening to everyone's testimony this morning, again, you know, I have to say it in Spanish first, no tienen vergüenza. You guys should be ashamed of yourself. Nine months is too long to be negotiating at the negotiating table. And for $20 pathway of pay, come on now, this is a federal state matching fund program that is so, it's a matching fund program, it's not like you're paying for it 100%. The other thing is, I have a question for you, based on my opinion, my opinion only. Did you happen to close quickly on predominantly white-driven union contracts before considering IHSS? Here, the reason why I'm asking, because this could be possibly looked at to be systemic, systemic violence and discrimination against people of color and people who are working as essential workers. When you're closing on contracts with the fire department, the sheriff's union, and other predominantly white male union-driven unions, before considering a predominantly union driven by women workers and people of color, there is a red flag here. And maybe what we need to do is get the governor involved, because this is his state, and he did an excellent job covering the storm, Hillary, down south. The other thing I want to say is that you are public servants. Public servants mean that you serve not only this city and the community of workers, but you serve everybody here. And after hearing all the testimony of families saying, "The food is too high, the rent is too high, we are cutting our vegetables, I'm taking care of my disabled children," you are hurting families. You should not be sitting in these seats. Sue Frost in Richmond, Desmond, and Pat Hume, who the last time I was here made a comment that, "Why is it taking it so long to get to the negotiating table?" I remember that.
Desiree, can you please wrap up?
Yeah, I am going to wrap it up. I believe there needs to be an investigation to find out exactly what contracts you are settling first, that you have this union and these workers waiting so long. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Antonio de Loera, and I am here on behalf of the United Farm Workers in solidarity with SEIU 2015, who stood with us last year during our march and our fight for farmworker unionization rights here in Sacramento. Long-term caregivers like farmworkers were, are among the essential workers who are the backbone of our society, and were the backbone of our society during the COVID-19 pandemic, keeping loved ones and strangers alike safe and healthy at great personal risk. I'm here today to say that we cannot call workers essential while treating them as disposable. They may not run Sacramento, they may not run Sacramento, but they make Sacramento run. The IHSS workforce deserves a fair contract, a living wage, and the respect and gratitude of our entire society, and certainly of our government and elected officials. I think it's I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stephen.
Good morning, Stephen.
Good morning. Say good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
So my name is Steve Payan. This is my daughter, Elisa. We've been here more than a few times. And then this is what democracy looks like, right? So we've got to raise them at an early age. So as you know, I'm a proud full-time single father, IHSS provider, and also a proud member of SEIU 2015. I care for my young friend Caesar Subron. He has cerebral palsy and requires 24-hour care. At these meetings, you can see that we are out here trying to express from our deepness in our souls that connect to your souls about how important it is for us as humans to take care of the most fragile of our community because that's what it, that's what y'all are deciding today. And I know y'all can clearly understand that this should be at least $20. And then I know somewhere inside your souls that y'all know that we need to be having a living wage. We have to have these innovated thought processes, how we can come together as Sacramento to make this happen. And that's what we're asking too, because y'all know that we can have the matching funds. And so for every dollar that we spend here, we get $5 back. So like, basically, let me rewind a little bit. So MIT study, so a living wage in Sacramento is for a family of one with a daughter or a kid should be like $39.34. And we're only asking for a pathway to 20. I mean, like, we're barely going to get like $2 and then a small pathway to 20. We know it's doable. Y'all know it's doable. We know this back and forth has to happen for some reason. But so a recent survey revealed that 86% of IHSS work providers, 86% of us IHSS providers in Sacramento are working multiple jobs to make ends meet. And that's a huge burden on families, and it creates instability in households and weakens family. The divorce rate is 50%, right? You know what I mean? So it's like, we have to invest in our families. So we're investing in our communities that allows us to live and thrive. So we want y'all to invest in your community and come to the table and give us that pathway to 20 because a living wage is not $20. We're continuously on a rat wheel every single time fighting for a negotiation. We should be fighting for proportional, to the cost of living. Everything should be indexed to the cost of living. And we got to find out ways how to make that innovative. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Ryan.
Standboard member. My name is Ryan Kim. I'm the Union Vice President for Union American Fidget Dentistry. And as we are here, joining the coalition of unions, including Union of American Fidget Dentistry, California Nurses Association, and American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees, in calling upon the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors immediately put a stop to a planned medical assisted treatment, plan set for implementation in Sacramento County jails and juvenile homes September 1, 2023. Sacramento Jail has thrown this plan together, MAT program together without consulting physicians, mental health professionals, or addiction treatment professionals who have the expertise in this field to properly structure a total care treatment plan for patients within the jail system. This plan, MAT, has no policies, no protocols, no procedures in place, and our members and coworkers have not received the proper level of training to conduct such a program. And since we're going to implement this program, none of the doctors were ever asked for any feedback. None of the nurses were asked any feedback. They said, because it's a constant decree court mandate that we must do this right away, and we are not given any proper training, and we have no psychiatric help, we have no cognitive behavioral therapy, and we really don't have any kind of training to do this. I'm afraid that we implement this program on September 1 as is planned, that we will open ourselves to more overdoses, more issues, more deaths, and more litigation to Sacramento County. And we do not want to deal with that because we have plenty of litigation from the jail and from the inmate population. I believe the suboxone therapy, if haphazardly done, will increase the narcotic supplies in the community, including fentanyl. And it will be over everywhere, and it will cause so much more grief and so much more death and so much more litigation. I just want to let you guys know that. And Sony Nagasorn is my fellow physician in the main county jail, if you want to speak, if you want to add to that.
And you can just raise both those microphones, put them together, if you just stand between them.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
I would just add that when the physicians did question the supervisors, ask, how do we deal with diversion? What happens when patients are cheaking medications and taking it back to their cells to supply to other inmates? In the middle of having multiple fentanyl overdoses, as we've had recently, the answer was, it's okay if they cheek, it's okay if they do, you know, keep prescribing it. And we're not, as physicians, comfortable doing that, both legally and ethically. Yet, we are going to be mandated to be doing this. The effect on the patients in our, in our population, of course, will be great. The effect on our licenses is something we're concerned about because our license is what we use to practice medicine and what the nurses use to practice within their scope. And of course, the litigation on the county is going to be wide open, as Dr. Kim mentioned. These are our concerns.
Thank you. And just so, we have our, we have our public health director here in chambers. I would encourage you to make contact with Mr. Lutz or contact anyone at one of the supervisor's offices. We can help put you in contact with him to discuss the issue. Thank you. Okay, and I'll move to, that concludes in person?
That concludes in person. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Catherine Wheatfield, and I'm calling from Orangevale. I just wanted to call in and say thank you to Sue Frost specifically and Forrest Johnson. They've been really helpful in the planning process regarding the project at 7104 Santa Juanita. So I just wanted to say thank you for giving us your time and keeping the line of communication open with the residents. And I also want to thank Planning for changing their ruling about that property's youth permit. We really appreciate that, and we think that was the right decision. I also want to thank the building department and code enforcement for their response to the unpermitted construction. And overall, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for your work. It's seen, it's appreciated, and we feel free. I do still believe that, you know, this project is a bad idea. I think that the owners are a huge liability for the community. And I think that it's much deeper to the existing resources in our community. We have multiple schools on this street. The one school that is within the 140 feet of the property serves over 16 different districts, the special needs school. And there are elderly homes, there are preschools, there are teen mental health homes on this street. And we just really would like you to consider the existing resources and the existing businesses and residents of Santa Juanita with any planning that you do in the future, including, you know, the project at 7104 and the other two open vacant lots that are for sale. We just really ask that you be mindful and intentional about anything that you plan to put on our street and you do. And we really want to thank you for the response and the time that you've taken for our community.
Thank you, caller. Can you wrap up, please?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next caller, and this is our final caller. Maybe the other caller dropped off. So that's it.
Okay. So when we opened off agenda, I thought we had additional callers. Did some of them drop off or?
We didn't have additional callers. We had additional people who signed up in person, and I didn't keep the master list.
Okay. And so we got everybody, we got everybody who signed up for, okay. Great. I'm seeing confirmation from multiple sources. So we will move on then to our consent calendar. And I believe you have a couple notes, Madam Clerk.
I do. For your Consent Matters, items 2 through 39. Item 16, you're adopting an ordinance to renew the Antelope Property and Business Improvement District and levy assessments. You waived reading on this on July 25. And then you're also adopting an ordinance for item 17 to renew the Fulton Property and Business Improvement District and levy assessments. This was waived on July 11.
Okay. Thank you. Wait a couple of seconds. I know several folks are leaving the chambers. Okay. So on the consent calendar, I will look first to my colleagues to see if anyone would like to make a comment or call an item off consent. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 14, please.
Item 14 is to approve the SMF Forward Art Program budget of $11 million in SMN Forward eligible art sites.
Great, thank you. I see our esteemed Airport System Director coming to the podium.
Good morning.
Good to see you, Cindy. Certainly heard from our county exec during my briefing yesterday some nuance and detail about this item. But it did occur to me, one of the questions I failed to ask during the briefing, and I'm hopeful that you can maybe elaborate a little bit, is a better, trying to give the board a better understanding of the, excuse me. Thank you. If you can give the board a better idea of the, the point in time during the art review process and the protocols around how the funds will be spent for public art for Sacramento Forward, at one point, if any, will the board have future opportunities to chime in on the actual either type of art? Or will we get down to a level of detail? Are we expecting to get down to a level of detail where we're in part helping review, thumbs up, thumbs down on particular art pieces? I just wanted to have a clear understanding of that since it seems apropos, given what we're being asked to do today.
Sure. Thank you so much for your question and your interest in art at SMF. So first of all, what we're going to do is we're going to come back to the board in the spring of '24 and give you a much more detailed sense of what we're, what the plan entails. But what I will answer your question, which is, you'll see, if you look in the scope for the contract with Shelley Willis, we'll see under Phase 2 that the plan is for art designs to become, to come before the Board of Supervisors for approval. And also what we anticipate, and she's going to flesh this out, but what we anticipate is that there will be panels that will be established for each given location and that the Board of Supervisors will have opportunities to nominate people to participate in that process. So there are a couple of ways in which the board will be able to have some input.
And who will also have the same ability to appoint in terms of the panel? Will the county executive, for instance, have an opportunity to do so?
So that's what she's going to be fleshing out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I am certainly very interested in understanding this as we move forward even better than I do now. Because I think if anything, from our experience with Terminal B, I think one of the things that really stands out is the public art that's really obviously very present and commendable for that facility. And I'm sure we learned plenty from that experience. But I would love to see us continue in that direction with the kind of emphasis that we've placed on making our terminals and our parking facilities and other aspects of the capital facilities that are at our international airport, replete with great public art.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost.
Hi. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to pull 36 for just a quick comment. Item 36 is the approval of an American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 district-directed funding allocation for District 4. And I think my friends from Citrus Heights are here for public comment on that also. And I'll just invite Casey, come on up. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank Ann Edwards and Emily Alken for thinking outside the box and helping us pull this together. One of the biggest challenges I've had with the CARES and ARPA funds is figuring out, you want to, sometimes you want to give, but you can't always give, they can't always receive what you want to give because they don't, there are qualifying criteria for funds. And I was excited that we were able to pull together some assistance for Citrus Heights for their navigator, and that was some out-of-the-box thinking. So thank you to county staff, and thank you to Citrus Heights. Ash Feeney and Casey, thank you for coming down here today. I'm excited that we're going to be voting on this and wholeheartedly support it. But if you have comments?
Great. Yeah, I'll just be brief. And I wanted to thank the board, and in particular Supervisor Frost, on behalf of Mayor Schaefer and the City of Citrus Heights Council. We really want to extend our gratitude for supporting this program. We think it's an important program. Since self-help housing folded, this definitely filled a need for us, and we really appreciate your support on that and funding this program. We're excited and grateful for your staff. We've had a great opportunity to work with Emily and Angel. And we're just really thankful for your support on this and really appreciate it.
And thank you for the great partnership that you have with our county staff and in our efforts on homelessness. It's, it's, I guess, a work in progress. And we're always working with the best of intentions to hope that programs work. And having partnerships with the outlying cities is really important to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Okay, I don't see any other supervisors with comments or questions about consent items. So we'll move to public comment on the consent calendar.
Yes, so we do have a public comment for item 14, and that was already read into the record. And so that's for Davi Rodriguez.
This is something I've been working on.
So if you could just stand between, you could stand in between the mics over there. Or you can hold a microphone if you need to move papers around on the display.
Where do you put the paper? Here or there?
Yeah, he's just getting the paper set up.
Okay, sorry.
We won't start your time until you get it set up. We'll display it. Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
Sir Rodriguez, stand in between the mics.
And.
All right. How's that?
That's great. That's great.
All right. Like I said, I've been working on this for a couple of years. Art seems to have some sort of special exemption or an unlawful one that scrambles the brains of bureaucrats. This contract that you're proposing here is all good until it gets to the point where she is managing the installation of the art. And she is not a licensed contractor, so she cannot do this. And it doesn't matter that she doesn't pick up a hammer or a jackhammer or a paintbrush. That she holds herself out in the capacity to do, manage other contractors is where it crosses the line, too. Now, I don't say this off the top of my head. I complained to the City Metropolitan Arts Commission for a couple of years. I went to their meetings and told them that they were breaking the law here, and they basically told me to pound sand. I went to the city council meetings and told them the same thing, and they told me the same thing. So the last time they put out a contract like this, I turned them in to the contractor's license board. They investigated and they cited the contractor. He got a penalty, a civil penalty this time, but it is an actual crime. They go out and put people in handcuffs every month for this very same thing. Now, I know this contract is nuanced a little bit to make it seem like, well, I'm not actually going to do this work. The cited contractor that I pointed out here also did not pick up any hammers or paintbrushes or anything. They just managed and got permits and all that kind of stuff that you're saying that this person has to do as well. But the board saw it otherwise, which is the right interpretation. They also cited the contractor that worked with this other contractor. They also cited the contractor that worked with this other contractor, who was licensed for associating themselves with an unlicensed contractor. Now, this person that you're contracting with here has on her website that she does installation, manages installations for other artists, too. Legally, she cannot put that on her website without putting a disclaimer that she is not licensed under Chapter Nine of the Business and Professions Code. I also made a big enough stink about this, that the Contractors' Board just recently put up a section on their front page that addresses this not only for me, but for you. And so I urge you to rethink this contract, because if this goes through, I will do the same thing here that I did with the other one.
Could you make sure that we have copies of those documents? You can either email them to them or give them to the provider or the clerk.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do not have any other callers.
Okay. So I'll bring it back to the board on the consent calendar and look for a motion.
Move Consent.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Please vote.
unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, that'll take us to item 40.
Item 40 is the presentation of resolution recognizing the 20th anniversary of Higher Heights Community Church.
I'd ask Pastor Dennis Austin, maybe join me at the podium. I'll start out, Pastor, and then you can say a few words. So it's an honor and a privilege for me to be here today to honor Higher Heights Community Church on the occasion of their 20th anniversary. I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but I will read a couple excerpts. In September 2003, Higher Heights Community Church, formerly known as Higher Heights Tabernacle of Praise, Church of God in Christ, was established in the home of Pastor Jack and First Lady Winona Scott. In 2019, Higher Heights moved from Citrus Heights to American Lakes Elementary School in Natomas. Pastor Austin was installed as senior pastor. Shortly after he was elevated as senior pastor, he changed the name to Higher Heights Community Church. And in March of 2020, when shortly before my path crossed with Higher Heights, the elementary school in Natomas was no longer available, and they started live streaming services. And then a few months later, Higher Heights received the keys to what is now their church home at 2230 Arden Way in Arden Arcade, in West Arden Arcade in particular. And about a year after opening the doors in Arden Arcade, they opened the Jack Scott Outreach Center, which allows Higher Heights Community Church to host a food enclosure, closet, children's church, and other community activities. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Pastor Austin, I congratulate Higher Heights Community Church on your 20th anniversary. And I'd just say personally, on a personal note, I've been to many events at Higher Heights. I have had the occasion to see firsthand the services that you and your church provides to a community, a community in real need in West Arden Arcade, where there aren't a lot of organizations that provide the services that you do. I know one thing you held is a vigil after those, that family was murdered in Arden Arcade off Wada Way. Very, very impactful for the community. But I am just privileged to know you and am very happy for the services you do, and I hope you will be around for a lot longer to serve the profound needs of the folks in Arden Arcade. And with that, I'll turn it over to you to say a few comments and then invite, another reason this is personal to me is because Pastor Austin's better half is Iris Austin in my office, and she will come down here to join us for photographs as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Pastor.
Thank you for that. First, I would just like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity in recognizing Higher Heights Community Church for 20 years in ministry. I would like to say thank you to all the partners of Higher Heights Community Church for their dedication to ministry and just sticking by with me as a pastor. Again, like Rich has said, this ministry started in 2003, the founding pastors in his home, and due to sickness, I took over the ministry. So now we are in the Arden Arcade area, serving the ministry. Our logo or our theme, our saying is, "We are a church that's into what God is up to." And so we have a heart for ministry. We have a heart for the community, and I know there's more work that needs to be done. So again, thank you to everyone for this opportunity.
Take a couple of photos here? Where would you like us?
Over here.
It's the better background. Okay, item 41.
Item 41 is the presentation of resolution recognizing the 65th anniversary of the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
I had a minor panic attack when I didn't know where the physical resolution was, so...
You got the fancy frame.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. It is. So this is a resolution recognizing Cordova Recreation and Park District on their 65th anniversary. And I won't go through all of the wherlasses and all of that, but I'll say that in 1958, it was established by two gentlemen, Roland Fiederspill and Glenn Alstrom, who established three parks that would later become Fiederspill Park, Alstrom Park, and then Hagan Park, named after the first district administrator, Paul Hagan, who was viewed pretty as a revolutionary within the park world for building joint-use facilities for classes and sports, and ultimately the creation of the Cordova Community Center. And that name still obviously holds tremendous weight in the Rancho Cordova community. But Cordova Recreation and Park District spans Rancho Cordova, Rosemont, Riviera East, and over 600 acres. Forty-three different parks. And in June 28th of 2021, they opened the Cordova Community Pool, which I know was a huge accomplishment and a much-needed amenity for the community. And so now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby extends congratulations to the Cordova Recreation and Park District. The Board of Directors and Staff, past and present, on the occasion of its 65th anniversary, and further extend best wishes for continued success in its service to the diverse and growing community within Sacramento County. And with us, we have members of the board, members of staff, and the current district administrator, Patrick Larkin. Mr. Larkin, would you like to address the board?
Thank you. We're, I guess, seniors now. So we appreciate the partnership we have with Sacramento County. The staff have been incredible to work with. We are growing, so we are 65 years old, but we have still a lot of growth to do. We're excited to celebrate. On September 8th, we're having a big gala at our new aquatics complex, so if you can join us for that, that would be fantastic. And we just want to thank you for the recognition today, so appreciate it. Would you like to?
Do you guys want to come down, since there's a couple of you that also represent?
We're not, we have two of you at least, right?
Three.
Three? Okay.
I think this side, if you could cut it a little bit, balance out nicely. One, two, and three. And just stand still so we can let these lovely ladies get their pictures. One more. Okay, one, two, and three.
Okay.
For the record, we didn't have any public comments for the first two presentations.
Oh, thank you, Flo.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll move on to item 42.
Yes, for item 42, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing and approval of the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento issuance of tax-exempt bonds obligations for the Albert Einstein Residence Center in the amount of up to $21,250,000.
Okay, good morning, Whitney.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager and Development Finance and Portfolio Management. Staff is requesting approval of tax-exempt bonds issuance for the rehabilitation and financing of the Albert Einstein Residence Center project. This is an affordable housing senior development project located at 1935 Wright Street in Sacramento that is at risk for losing its affordability. Currently, there is an existing project-based Housing Assistant Payment, or HAP, contract from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for all the units that is set to expire in 2026, but will be extended with this acquisition. The property consists of one single-story, one single-two-story residential building, which includes 78 one-bedroom, one-bathroom units where residents will pay 30% of their income for rent. The property was originally constructed in 1981 and had a large renovation 13 years ago, and the property is in really great shape. The interior renovations will include the reconfigurations of eight ADA units with accessibility to kitchens, doors, bathrooms, tubs, and grab bars. The remaining 70 units will include, but not limited to, replacement of entry doors, upgraded appliances, lighting, life safety systems, and flooring. Some of the exterior renovations include a repair to the parking lot and walkways, upgrading site accessibility, replacement of the roof, installation of new lighting, and upgrades to the elevator and trash enclosures. Security Properties is a developer. They've acquired the property to keep it affordable. They have acquired and developed over 107,000 residential units. This will be their first project in Sacramento. The project will be managed by the John Stewart Company, and resident services will be provided by communities advocating for resident empowerment or care. Care will provide 20 hours of onsite services per week. In closing, staff recommends approval of the taxes and bond issuance for the rehabilitation of Albert Einstein Residence Center, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Whitney. I don't see any comments from my colleagues. I'm very supportive of this, and I appreciate your work, SHRA's work on this. I think it's a great project. And I also want to highlight that this is actually right where we have taken some of the CDBG funds to improve some of the sidewalks in the area, to improve access to a lot of folks who walk from in this area to target. So appreciate your work in that regard, too, which I think will complement this project. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'm assuming there are no public comments for this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say this is exactly what you hope happens when you build these subsidized projects, is that when the cloud on title runs out, somebody steps in and re-ups them and keeps them affordable and available. And, you know, certainly in today's environment, this would have been a prime target to get in there and raise it up to market rate. And so the fact that it's still going to be available to current and future residents at this pretty deep dive of affordability is a good thing. So fully support.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume. No public comment, no further comments from my colleagues, then I would move support or move to approve staff recommendation on the item.
Second.
Please vote.
unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Okay, 43.
Okay, for item 43, you're back as the Board of Supervisors. This is a resolution requesting the City of Sacramento to initiate reorganization proceedings in the Del Paso Park area.
Okay, thank you. And I brought this to the board, this resolution, and I've had some discussions with Supervisor Serna about this. It's actually in his district. We have a really very unusual situation for this piece of city property west of Arden Arcade, or west of Wada Avenue, north of Auburn Boulevard. Can we get, is there any way we can get the map east of Auburn Boulevard? Can we get, by any chance, get the map on the screen? The map which is attached to the resolution? Is that possible, Flo? Oh, thank you. That's, no, that's fine. So that illustrates it. It's literally a peninsula that sticks out there. So you can, and it's surrounded on three sides by unincorporated residents and businesses. And shortly after I got elected and really started talking to a lot of the members of the community, it became very clear that a lot of the impacts from inside the park and from things originating inside the park affect people in unincorporated Sacramento County. And an inherent challenge is that the City of Sacramento is not accountable to the residents or businesses surrounding this peninsula. So it really also came in, I think, in a little more, in a little more sharp focus when the City of Sacramento put a respite center at the old Science Center. And it was the, but this is not, this is not necessarily linked to that, but I think it just really highlighted the challenges of residents and businesses being affected by decisions of a government entity that doesn't represent them. And, you know, I want to certainly thank Supervisor Serna and his office and Council Member Laloe and all the meetings we had with members of the community to try to address some of these issues. But it occurred to me, and I think a lot of members of the community, it's really kind of a structural challenge that we have here. And so I decided to bring this in consultation with certainly a lot of folks and certainly in conversations with the City of Sacramento, both the city manager and the mayor and Council Member Laloe, to bring this resolution, which really, it's not entirely accurate how it's titled here. What this resolution is, is just highlighting some of the challenges that I've mentioned in terms of kind of the governance here and the response to issues either occurring in the park or originating from the park. It is to forward this to the City of Sacramento to request their consent to the initiation of reorganization proceedings. And if the City of Sacramento consents to that, then the county would initiate those reorganizations or an evaluation of reorganization. I've had discussions with county staff, and I know our LAFCO Director, Jose Enriquez, is in the audience as well today if there are any questions. But to initiate that process would cost about $5,000 or so, depending on after you get into it, see how much that would cost. And then that would just inform us and the city council about the best way to proceed. But before we, but before we do that, we really need to highlight that this is something the county would like to do. And that's why I bring this here today, to ask the consent of my colleagues to move this forward to the City of Sacramento, to see if they would consent to initiate these proceedings. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues to see if there are any questions or follow-up or any comments from staff or county council.
So, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the fact that you've taken the lead on this. And as you made mention, you and I have been coordinating on this for a number of months, along with some of the residents out in this part of the community. And I think I've been pretty clear when asked my opinion several times now about the prospect of de-annexation, that it has to make sense. It has to make sense from a number of perspectives. And that's, of course, what the LAFCO process is really designed And that's, of course, what the LAFCO process is really designed to do in great depth and detail, is to analyze what that would mean from a fiscal standpoint, what it means from a service delivery standpoint. But I do think you're right that the whole chapter that we've now gone through and continue to go through in many respects with regard to the city's respite center at the old Science Museum has really surfaced this issue in a way that, at least in my tenure, I've not witnessed. And so I'm happy that you've—I think you're taking a very thoughtful approach here, starting with the resolution, expressing that interest, and then giving it to the city for their consideration. I would also add, too, that of those that have been consulted with relative to the prospect of de-annexation, it's also been Liz Bellis, our Regional Parks Director, as there is a sizable, I would say, almost regional park here that I think needs a lot of attention. And quite frankly, the concerns that have been expressed, particularly by the residents about the condition of the park have given— have again given us a lot to think about in terms of enhanced service delivery by an appropriate governing body. So I'm eager to second your motion at the right time so that we can get the process started.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I certainly appreciate that. Okay, no more comments, so we'll move on to public comment.
Yeah, we have quite a few. Okay, Doug is our first public comment.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we had this all organized, and then we aren't in the same order that we had it organized. So Doug O.C., forty-thirteen Park Road. I've lived at this location since November eighth of nineteen ninety-six. I rise in support of the resolution. There are others who will speak to different facets of the challenge in front of us, but this resolution is about establishing a connection between the people who live in a certain area, that being in the neighborhood of this portion of Del Paso Park, east of Wad Avenue, and the public parks that are in their neighborhood. We're trying to connect them. Now, this peninsula is an anachronism from when the city acquired the remains of an estate back in nineteen twelve. So it's not like this is something that's new to everybody. It's a hundred and ten years in the making to get to this point. This is not a judgment on my part. It's an observation that for the last twenty-five years at least, there's been no incentive on the city's part to invest in the park east of Wad Avenue. And why is that? And the reason is that there are no city residents that live within two miles of this location. None, zero. The city has no—in addition to that, having attended the city's budget hearings this past spring, the city has no discretionary local funding source to invest in this park. In the city's most recent budget hearings, the Director of City Parks acknowledged a hundred and twenty-five million dollar maintenance backlog in the parks throughout the city. A hundred and twenty-five million dollars on parks that are surrounded by city residents. It's not logical for anyone to assert that city leaders are going to reduce spending on parks where their residents and constituents are currently using in favor of spending in a park that none of them use. Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple other points that I'd like to make if you could grant me an additional thirty seconds. All right, thank you. Two final points. There's no consent— two final points. What is the most common improvement that everybody in this community can find in a park? The most common one? It's a restroom. For obvious reasons. You know, you go to a park, and you gotta go, you gotta go. Since twenty-twelve, there has been no restroom facilities in this park. That tells you how high a priority this is for the folks who are in charge right now. And then the other thing is, this park does have enormous potential. And while I'm respectful of other people's perspective, I speak from experience about how to turn a park around. I stand ready, willing, and able to do my share to make this park the jewel it ought to be.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you. I'm Michael Seaman. I support the proposed resolution that seeks detachment of Del Paso Park area east of Wad Avenue. As someone who's been a local elected official of a Recreation and Park District Board for over twenty-eight years, I know how vital parks are to a community. Parks are not mere amenities or nice-to-have items. They are essential infrastructure components that make a community whole. Parks provide open space that fosters access to nature, community gatherings, and outdoor recreation opportunities for individuals and families. They're particularly valuable for mental health in places like dense urban areas such as served by Del Paso Park. In order for parks to add value to a community, they must be operated and maintained as assets for public benefit. That requires ongoing responsible stewardship of public lands, something that's been unfortunately absent at Del Paso Park. The situation there is unacceptable. Public safety has been compromised, the facilities have been neglected, and the environment has been harmed. Residents of the city tend not to use the park. For them, it is remote and hard to get to. The park's location has resulted in the site falling off the city's priority list for parks. Yet, as your staff report indicates, Del Paso Park is surrounded by unincorporated neighborhoods whose residents are the park users. They're the ones whose daily lives have been devalued by the systemic failures at the park. They're the ones for whom a safe, well-maintained park is so important. Detachment of the area from the City of Sacramento and reorganization into the County of Sacramento is the appropriate remedy. I applaud your leadership in that regard. Thank you for the opportunity to come in.
Thank you, Michael.
Charles?
Morning, Charles.
Morning. Is it still morning? This one. I propose a contest here for those of you to get a little education about Del Paso Park. I see that park as a future outdoor classroom, such a beautiful place full of ecological and historical things. So here's a little contest. You see how many of these things that you knew before I bring them up today? Do you know that artifacts were found in the creek bed that dated three to six thousand years ago? Three to six thousand years ago. You know what was going on in the world at that time? The Egyptians were building the pyramids, and we had Native Americans living in what is not, Del Paso Park. There are oak trees in that park that were saplings when Abraham Lincoln was president. Oak trees there, that far back. It was once part of a huge oak savanna. Native Americans lived in this park hunting small game and using acorns as their staple. There are three distinct species of oaks in this park. James Denver, a one-time California State Senator and Governor of the Colorado Territory, and the man the city of Denver was named after, killed a newspaper editor near here. In a duel. Did you know the area was once part of the world's largest thoroughbred ranch? Did you know the park and the creek are part of one of Northern California's largest watersheds? Did you know that Auburn Boulevard grew out of the wagon ruts of those that came to California over the Pass to seek gold? And some that were going the opposite way for those who went bankrupt, broke, and were turning? Do you know that Del Paso Park was named after Rancho Del Paso, which means the ranch on the pass? And so Del Paso Park was named the ranch on the pass. Did you know that Abraham Lincoln, at the building of the Transcontinental Railroad, proclaimed this area at the beginning of the mountains where the track layers were paid more than the flatlanders? Got one more.
Okay.
Did you know that Del Paso Park, once known as Sacramento City Park, was designed to be built out and rival New York's Central Park and San Francisco's Golden Gate Park? And of course, it didn't happen. But from that, we did gain one thing, a title. A title as the park too far. It's too far from the city, it's too far from the police, it's too far from the Rangers, it's too far to maintain. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would have failed that quiz, by the way.
Almost everybody would because there was no information out there.
Morning, Tim.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Tim Valinsky. I grew up next to the park. I've been involved in the conservation and restoration of Del Paso Regional Park and Arcade Creek for over forty years. And I entered my comments into the record with the clerk and also the Sierra Club supports these. With all due respect to Supervisor Desmond, this is a nuclear option. The resolution is proposing a de-annexation. That's an extreme approach when other governance options have not been explored. This includes a joint powers authority with the city. This includes a conveyance to a land trust. This includes a land-backed conveyance to descendants of the Nissenon tribe that Charlie just mentioned. That's item one. Item two is, the county has its own encampment problem. The county portion of the Arcade Creek watershed is solid trash. And so this notion that somehow de-annexing this to the county, that the county's going to be a better waterway steward, I think is fallacy. The third is, and we're going to get into some investments now. The people before me said the city didn't invest in the park. We're going to talk about those. The errors of omission here, and I looked at this from a SEQA standpoint, it doesn't talk—the resolution doesn't talk about natural areas. About fifty percent of this area was designated as natural habitat. In nineteen eighty-five, the resolution doesn't address that and doesn't explain how that's going to be—that land and water is going to be stewarded. The city and the county do not have natural areas programs. There's no expertise for managing these areas, and it doesn't—the resolution doesn't explain how the county's going to do that. There's been a multimillion-dollar investment in the replacement of Auburn Boulevard Bridge. This could cause chaos and time delays with that. There is errors of omission with regard to Renfree Field. The city secured three-point-two-five million dollars to restore Renfree Field. That's a serious investment. That's a state investment. My opponents don't mention that. There was a multimillion-dollar investment in stormwater management, and I'm going to take three minutes because my other people did. Item number seven on stormwater. There's a stormwater detention basin. The city spent millions of dollars building that to treat polluted runoff coming off the residential areas where I grew up. That's been a wildly successful program. There's no O and M in the resolution for that. Item eight, errors of omission, cultural resources. The resolution doesn't talk about the archaeological resources that Mr. Duckworth just talked about. How are we going to manage those going forward? Number nine, the city's land use decisions have actually degraded this watershed. The County Board of Supervisors has approved massive development within the watershed and within the floodplain of Arcade Creek. How is the county going to be a better steward of this creek and the park? And number ten, all of these factors need to be considered in a full-blown SEQA environmental impact report so that the LAFCO doesn't make a decision of folly. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I note that we do have our LAFCO director here, so I'd ask him to come to the podium and maybe give us some insight about some of the concerns that have just been expressed, especially as it relates to SEQA and some of the environmental concerns.
Jose, why don't you come now? Thank you. And thanks for being here, Jose.
Just—not to go into great detail, but in terms of process, because I think there was ample reference just made to the resolution doesn't do this, the resolution doesn't say that. But to me, the nature of this particular resolution is simply to initiate a process where much of the concerns that were just enumerated would and should be analyzed, but it's in the construct of a LAFCO process. So maybe you can maybe just share a few words about that.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name's Jose Enriquez. I'm the executive officer for the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission. The question, as it relates to SEQA for this resolution, it really would not be considered a project. This is—a my understanding of the resolution is initiation of discussion. It doesn't initiate any LAFCO proceedings, and it wouldn't be until you get to the LAFCO process in which the SEQA question would have to be determined depending upon what the plan for service would be for the park. So at this point, no SEQA would be necessary, in my opinion. Obviously, I'm not an attorney, but at this case, I don't think such consideration is warranted.
Right, but the question, my point in bringing you forward is that what I know about LAFCO and having in a previous life actually managed the largest annexation since nineteen sixty-eight to the City of Sacramento, there's always going to be a fork in the road during the LAFCO process where, as I think you just made reference, the question of whether something is—needs SEQA review, is negdect, or what have you, is part and parcel of a LAFCO process when it comes to either annexation or detachment, correct?
That is correct, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And that's a very critical point. We are not deciding here today on actual de-incorporation. We are asking today for the city to consent to us forwarding this to LAFCO to initiate that very evaluation that Supervisor Serna is referencing. So thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Before we get started here, I have a front-page article in Sacramento Bee that I'd like to enter into the record. This is an article on Del Paso Regional Park. The homeless people that were interviewed for this article, one of them was found dead just a couple months later after this article was published. So—and to speak to Mr. Valinsky, I'm one of the opponents and one of the neighborhoods that we have been at odds at for many, many years. Good morning. I'm here at this point in support of item forty-three, reorganization of Del Paso Regional Park. And I'm here to ask the questions. What if? Think of the possibilities. I'm sure that you're aware that the issues in Del Paso Regional Park that have for decades filled into our residential and business communities, I'm sure everyone is aware of that. There's been so many news articles, that sort of thing written about that. When I was in elementary school, I can recall sitting in a chair at a meeting with my grandfather, my mother and father, and our neighbors, listening to a city official promising to do better and pledging to clean up Del Paso Regional Park. This past week, the City of Sacramento has promised additional Rangers and reorganization of their strike teams. The city is going to spend three-point-two million in grant money to renovate the ballpark. Spending grant money and more promises will not solve the issue or make anything better. In fact, the grant money will only make things much, much worse. What if? Think of the possibilities. We cannot change the past, but what about the future? What if you could enjoy a day in the park without having your head on a swivel? What if we could avoid one needle stick? What if bird watchers and nature photographers again felt safe in the park? What if one elementary-age girl was rescued from human trafficking? What if businesses once again chose Del Paso Park for their picnics? What if there was one less dead body found in the park? What if high school track teams again used the park for meets? What if there was one less fire in the park? What if there was one less nine-one-one call for help? What if? Think of the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Next, we have Dean.
Kara Johnnys.
I wasn't even going to try it.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dean Kara Johnnys. I'm a retired science teacher at Miraloma High School. Back in the late nineties, with help from Doug O.C., we started a project called the Arcade Creek Project. We set it up to monitor about five miles of the creek, the watershed. We had planned, and it worked out, where the students did nine different studies at six— six different sites along the creek. They did cleanups, and then they did outreach to the community to make them understand why we need these kind of natural places. Well over 5,000 students took place in this project. Every year, 30 to 40 students went on to college to pursue fields in natural resource management. At the start of the project, when we would do cleanups, it was a lot of removal of invasive plants and a reasonable amount of trash that had flown down the waterway. By the end of the project, we had to start giving Sharps containers, excuse me, to the kids so that they could dispose of the needles they had found. We had parents starting to become very upset with the condition that their kids were being put into, to the point where district administration decided that the problems, the dangers outweighed the advantages of the project, and it was cut from funding after 21 years. So I'm here only to, excuse me, to say what we watched is the degradation of that parkway over our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Juliette.
Morning. Just one second. Quiet, Charlie. I like Charlie, by the way. So good morning. My name's Juliette Poro, and I live at 4336 Macy Drive, and I obviously support this item. These days, when my family goes to the park, even though we live close to Del Paso, we usually choose a county park like Gibbons, and because we want to go to a park that's safe. And sometimes I like to go on a bike ride by myself after a long day, busy, you know, to relax, and I don't want to go to Del Paso Park by myself. I have to bring somebody else with me to feel safe. I don't want my kids to fear for their safety when we go to the playground. I don't want them to have needles that we have to worry about, or sometimes there's adult items that I don't want them to see and touch. But it's not like that at Gibbons because they have good management there. The grounds are maintained, it's clear of trash, and there's lots of families there. People have barbecues, picnics, people play sports. It's the way that a park should be. It's a place to go to exercise, to enjoy green space, and it's just, it feels good to be there. So that's where we choose to go because that benefits our community and our family. We also like to go to Ansel Hoffman, which is also another county park that's not too far away, and they have the Effeyah Nature Center there, which I'm a member of. Things are very nice there, well managed by the county. It's safe, it's clean, it's a nature area with educational opportunities like we used to have at the Science Museum. There's respect for the environment and the wildlife there, and I want to pass that kind of an experience on to my kids, and I'd like for Del Paso Park to be like that. So basically, what's the difference between these two different situations? It's the governance there. The city park is in our unincorporated county neighborhood, and that's basically the state of why, that's the reason why it's in the state that it's in, is the way it's being governed. But Del Paso does have the potential to be the kind of park and nature area that I would take my family to. My final point is, is that all it needs is leaders who value and care about the needs of the residents surrounding the park, to take it over and bring back security, maintenance, positive programs for families like mine. So it's time for someone else to be in charge there, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliette. Morning, John.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is John Hoffman. You've received an email from me, I trust, with my formal statement as both a citizen and homeowner in Arden Arcade and as the president of the Greater Arden Chamber of Commerce. I am in favor of moving forward with this resolution. I want to thank Supervisor Serna and Chair Desmond for all the time that you've spent at the meetings with regard to this community park. So my interest is in more speaking with Chairman Hurd and Frost, and I would like for you to also consider this as a very important step for this community. With all due respect for Mr. Valinsky, I appreciate his bringing those points forward. I think those are items that should be addressed as this goes forward, but as was pointed out, this is merely to initiate the conversation and to move this forward. I am absolutely for that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Thank you, John.
And Charles.
Do you have any phone comment on this item?
At the moment, we do not.
Okay.
So obviously, I'm against the spread-out shelter model, and I'd like to see locations like this closed down eventually, but right now, with the amount of bed space that we're lacking, it kind of, I hope that doesn't become part of this plan, is to close down the, yeah, the Hope Cooperative Shelter that's right there. Because that's part of what's going on with this, is that there's issues because of the shelter, I believe. And so I think that do this in such a way as to where that can remain open maybe until there's more bed space, and also that Hope Cooperative doesn't lose funding. I'm not sure how much money they get from the city at that location, but it would be important to make sure that they don't lose money because of that, because that is one of the locations that actually does a lot of lifesaving stuff in that area for the homeless.
Thank you, Charles. This action here today, just for clarification, is not intended to impact the city shelter that is still city property, but certainly it does impact, influence the discussion about why we're having this discussion today. Any additional?
No public comments on the phone.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the board. I don't see any more comments. Thank you for the public comments from the neighbors. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just kind of wanted to address some of the comments that were made. You know, first of all, there's obviously a societal issue at hand here, and the pictures of the park, you could take pictures of many neighborhoods, many streets, and many parks from 2016 versus now, and look at the degradation that has happened because of what's happening to our society. So there's a way bigger issue than anything that's going to be solved at the LAFCO level or any governance issues. So I just wanted to put that out there. I do appreciate that, I think there are some very active, involved residents who are willing to step up and take a more hands-on approach to governing this, and I want to push back against the characterization that you're, these are your opponents, or that you're their opponent. I think you are all proponents, and you're proponents for seeing this land managed in a better way so that it has a higher functioning use that both honors the rich history of it as well as for folks who want to get out and use it right now, today, in a safe and positive way. So I'm in fully support of the resolution, and I think a lot of the questions that were raised are premature, and that there is, as was mentioned by my colleague, there is a very lengthy and protracted, at least in its examination process, that will take place as a part of this. And if nothing else comes of this, then simply sort of raising awareness and forcing the issue with our colleagues in the building down the street, then I think that's a positive outcome. So I'm fully in support.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. I'm glad you mentioned that because I too think intuitively, it doesn't seem like there's opposition. I mean, it seems like everybody is in favor of protecting the valuable environmental resources, archaeological resources, recreational spaces, and I think having this, possibly identifying a path where the governing body that has a more vested interest in doing those things is going to improve those aspects of the park. It's just axiomatic to me that local government is going to be more attentive to an area where they have accountability. And again, this is, the city, this is an afterthought, I think, for the city of Sacramento. And again, I say that without casting aspersions, without casting blame, but it's just the way it is because it is such an anomaly, I think, in just the geography. So with that, I will, I will move approval of the resolution, and I believe Supervisor Serna also already went public with a second, and I just also just really appreciate Supervisor Serna's leadership, steadfast leadership on protecting the natural resources in our parks, certainly, and this falls into that. So thank you.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. So I guess I'll ask county council, so after this will be transmitted to... Thank you. This will be transmitted to the city of Sacramento with a request for them to consent to initiating these proceedings?
Please.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So this will be transmitted, then, to the city of Sacramento?
Correct.
All right. That's the next step. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the public comment here as well and for staff support. Okay. That'll take us to item 44.
Yes. Item 44 is your 2022 annual report of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Good morning, and welcome, Dr. Sacco.
I'm Dr. Corinne MacIntosh-Sacco. My pronouns are she/her, and I am honored to serve as one of Supervisor Kennedy's appointees to the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. As someone who has a lifelong resident of Sacramento, South Sac specifically, and has made a career out of providing mental health services to Sacramento County residents, it really is an honor to serve. And currently, I am the board's chairperson, and I am here with our vice chairperson, Mr. Paul Wagstaff, to present the Mental Health Board's 2022 annual report.
Good morning, Paul.
The Mental Health Board's activities are guided in California Statute Welfare and Institutions Code 5604.2. Our duties include, but are not limited to, a review and evaluate the community's public mental health needs, services, facilities, and special problems in any facility within the county or jurisdiction where mental health evaluations or services are being provided. This includes, again, but not limited to, schools, emergency departments, and psychiatric facilities. We advise the governing body and the local mental health director as to any aspect of the local mental health program. We review and approve the procedures used to ensure citizen and professional involvement at all stages of the planning process. If you're a county in California that has a mental health plan, then you also have a mental health board. In the WIT code, it also specifies in how our board is to be compromised. It's to have 50% consumers or people with lived experience of mental illness, or the parents, spouses, siblings, or adult children of consumers. At least 20% of the total composition shall be consumers, and at least 20% shall be family members of consumers. It also states that one member of the board shall be a member of the local governing body, which has been Supervisor Kennedy. The Mental Health Board's purpose or why we do the work we do, we are committed to championing the rights of those with mental illnesses in Sacramento County. And what guides us in doing the work we do is the Mental Health Board's mission, which is to enable children with serious emotional disturbances and adults with mental illness to access services and programs that assist them in a manner tailored to each individual, to better control their illness, to achieve their personal goals, and to develop skills and supports leading to their living the most constructive and satisfying lives possible in the least restrictive available settings.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco. Good morning, supervisors. I too would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Desmond for making the nomination to serve in District Three of the Mental Health Board, and also to serve as vice chair. Thank you, Dr. Sacco. This is who we were in 2022, the Mental Health Board membership. If you want to take a look there, we have Ann Arneal, who is no longer on the board, she termed out, Laura Bemis, who also termed out. We still have Maria Pedro Castro from District One, and Dr. MacIntosh-Sacco.
Excuse me. What about Evan Minton?
Pardon?
Evan Minton.
Oh, and Evan is...
He came in 2023.
Yeah. He's...
Oh, okay. So this is membership from...
This is 2022.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Yeah, and I think that's good for context that this is 2022. Lord Santana Sanchez is no longer on the board from District Two. District Three, Ryan William Cho and myself are still on the board. And then in District Four, we have Brad Luth, and District Five, Teresa Rivera. Sylvia Rodriguez has also termed out. The Mental Health Board experienced three resignations of members during 2022. Lauren Shealy, Jasmine Morales, and Lord Santana Sanchez. Ms. Lauren Shealy served as the chairperson for most of that year, with Corinne taking over, moving from vice chair to chair during the year. Lauren Bemis was the board secretary at that time, and that role is now fulfilled by William Cho. When Ms. Shealy resigned in August 2022, Corinne Sacco was, or Corinne MacIntosh-Sacco was elected to that seat. And we also had three longtime members term out at the end of that year, Ann Arneal, Laura Bemis, and Sylvia Rodriguez. We have a number of standing committees that meet monthly. This is where the majority of our work as a board takes place, and those include the Adult System of Care Committee and the Children's System of Care Committee, the MHB, Mental Health Board Budget Committee, and Executive Committee, and then newly, as of October 2022, the Community Wellness Response Team Advisory Committee. In addition, MHB, Mental Health Board members had liaison assignments to related advisory boards and commissions in order to facilitate a close working relationship. There are a number of advisory boards and commissions whose goals overlap with the Mental Health Board, and it adds to the effectiveness of our board by staying abreast of the work done while also reporting to these bodies the work that we are doing. And if you take a look, there's a list there that includes the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Behavioral Health Racial Equity Collaborative, the Cultural Competence Committee, First Five Sacramento, Human Services Coordinating Council, National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, Older Adult Commission, the Quality Improvement Committee, and the Sacramento County Maternal Mental Health Collaborative. All of those various bodies bring different perspectives and insight to the board that allows us to do our work with that insight. Goals are identified and agreed to with a majority vote at our board's annual retreat held in January. This year, we held it on January 22, and our goals for the 2022 calendar year were established as monitoring the implementation of the priorities of the Division Behavioral Health Services, four policy-related goals that resulted in recommendations to the Board of Supervisors that will be discussed, and two process goals. And with that, I will hand this back to Corinne. Thank you.
So I'm sure you're all aware that the mental health landscape here in Sacramento has been rapidly changing and evolving, and so we have been very busy trying to keep oversight on that. So in 2022, we had the goal of monitoring the development and implementation of new programs that were coming out of Behavioral Health Services, including assisted outpatient treatment, or Laura's Law, the transformation of the Sacramento County Adult Mental Health outpatient system, as well as implementation of peer support specialist training, and the ongoing and ever-growing program for providing services to individuals experiencing homelessness. And we kept apprised of that by having Behavioral Health Services Division managers reporting and presenting at our respective systems of care committees on the status of implementation, and because we felt they're doing a good job, and no formal recommendations were issued on that. A policy goal in regards to improving school-based mental health services in Sacramento County, we had a series of presentations on this topic, starting back in June 2020. As you know, the children's mental health is something that is becoming more alarming as we go, and so looking at schools as wellness centers, oftentimes that is the first and only place that youth are able to access mental health services. And so recommendations were made for not just Behavioral Health Services, but also the Sacramento County Office of Education and Department of Health Services accelerating its Centers of Wellness program to increase the mental health services that are provided in schools for behavioral services and other county mental health providers delivering information on platforms that youth use, like TikTok and not MySpace, but Facebook and Instagram. And also that the Mental Health Board have youth board members that are empowered by having voting privileges.
And Paul?
Thank you, Corinne.
Thank you, Corinne. Our 2022 goals and accomplishments. Recommendations include Behavioral Health Services access staff should work with school personnel to encourage them to have a policy of making a warm handoff to access when they find that parents are not being assisted in making the access referral contact. BHS and SCOE should develop model memorandums of understanding between community-based agencies and school districts to streamline access to schools across Sacramento County so mental health clinicians and peer advocates can have easy access to campuses for provision of services to students on campus. And in that regard, that work between the Behavioral Health Services and the Sacramento County Office of Education should support those MOUs. And also providing information to LBGTQ+ youth about alternative organizations in the community they can use as a supplement to the school referral process. In that regard, building on that recommendation, the Mental Health Board sent the Board of Supervisors a letter in November of 2022, improving the process of referrals from schools to especially mental health services. Corinne?
All right, and so another policy goal is to improve the vocational rehabilitation services for consumers provided by full-service partnerships, or FSPs in Sacramento County. We made the recommendation that Behavioral Services should add individual placement and support to employment, or IPS, to services offered by FSPs. This is to provide evidence-based employment services to partners, that FSPs should teach clients when possible also to use public transportation, to mitigate transportation as a barrier to employment, and that FSP staff should be trained so that they understand how wages from employment affects social security insurance, or SSDI, so they can educate their clients about the effects of working on their benefits. And another policy goal was in regards to Behavioral Services provided to folks that are criminal justice-involved in Sacramento County jails. The Mental Health Board held meetings over 10 months, where we received presentations by system partners and other stakeholders. We obtained first-person accounts from family members and consumers about their encounters of being detained in Sacramento County jails, interaction with law enforcement during a behavioral health crisis, and attempts to receive appropriate behavioral health services in the community. These recommendations, as you may recall, were presented at the December 7, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting on the Report on Population Reduction Efforts and Request for Direction on Steps to Address Jail Facility Deficiencies for May's Consent Degree Compliance. And these recommendations included adopting a "care-first, jails-last" policy resolution that values a comprehensive continuum of care for individuals with mental illness, substance use, and co-occurring disorders, rather than incarceration, to invest in building and operating a 24-hour assessment and intervention service center that'd be in order for law enforcement and first responder partners to divert people with behavioral health and/or substance abuse needs away from incarceration and emergency room visits, to get linkage to services and the care that their condition requires, and also to increase the number of subacute care beds in Sacramento County. We also made the recommendation of, instead of prioritizing funds for constructing treatment space inside the jails, to construct a freestanding mental health treatment facility that has beds licensed at both the POF, the psychiatric health facility level, and licensed at the more, the subacute, or MHRC, Mental Health Rehabilitation Center level.
Here are some of the presentations that we made, that we had at our general meetings of the Mental Health Board in 2022. In April, we had SAC Maps by CalVoices, also Brown Act highlights by County Council, and that tends to repeat at least once a year, if we can do it. In July, the Wellness Crisis Call Center and Response Program update by the Behavioral Health Services Program staff. And then also increased accessibility and inclusivity of Mental Health Board meeting procedures were discussed at that meeting. In August of that year, Sacramento County's implementation of California, well, of CAL AIM for Behavioral Health Services by the Behavioral Health Services Director. And in October, implementation and operation of 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline by Well Space Health. Site visits were not conducted for the first six months of 2022 because of the COVID crisis and emergency, but they resumed quite actively in June of 2022 and included the following: the Hope Cooperative Mental Health Crisis Respite Center in June; in July, Synergies Adult Residential Treatment Facility in South Sacramento; in August, Sacramento Mental Health Urgent Care Clinic, that had been recently opened before that; in September, the Sacramento County Mental Health Treatment Center; and then Mental Health Court down in the Sacramento County Superior Court with Judge Brown in October of 2022. Corinne?
So in addition to our general meetings and our respective system of care meetings and our liaison assignments, and we also have ad hoc work groups. These are time-limited, really focus areas of study. And we had two major ones for 2022. One was dedicated to psychiatric advance directives, or known as pads, and the other was dedicated to the Wellness Crisis Call Center and Response Program. For the pads issue, the Mental Health Board did send a letter to this board in June 2022 recommending that Sacramento County participate in the Psychiatric Advance Directives Multi-County Collaborative MHSA Innovations Project, and that is still in process. And for the ad hoc work group dedicated to the WCCCRP, this work group thoroughly reviewed the community stakeholder input that was received, and we also researched effective practices for community advisory committees of similar programs. We created a set of recommendations for membership criteria with the purposeful prioritization of community members with lived experience. We drafted an advisory committee application, participated in screening and selection procedures, and we led the initiative for renaming of this program through community participation, all the while advising the Division of Behavioral Health Services on program design and implementation, and to provide information to the public, so serving as an interim advisory committee until that actual committee was stood up in October 2022. And we have some other accomplishments that are noteworthy. We conducted the public hearing on the draft Mental Health Services Act 2022/2023 Annual Report, or Annual Update, excuse me. We approved the 2021 Data Notebook that was focused on racial and ethnic inequities in behavioral health, and this is required also by California Welfare and Institutions Code. And we also approved the 2022 Data Notebook, whose focus was on the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on behavioral health needs and services. Paul?
Other accomplishments in 2022. We updated our conduct agreement, set of guidelines that our members agree to and to hold themselves while interacting with each other, both in and outside of meetings, increased allotted time for public comment from two minutes to three minutes per speaker. We updated the Mental Health Board brochure for marketing purposes. We also updated the recruitment letter and sent to mental health organizations and other system partners for assistance with promotion. And we updated our Mental Health Board webpage to promote current vacancies. In addition, as you can see on the screen, we've participated in interview panels for the positions of Behavioral Health Services, Forensic Behavioral Health Division Manager, and the Sacramento County Director of Health Services. Our process goals: to increase accessibility and inclusivity of the Mental Health Board meeting procedures, and increasing recruitment of Mental Health Board members, as described The Mental Health Board and Support Team in Contact is listed on this slide, and you see Jason Richards, Glenda Bassina, and then also a way to contact the Mental Health Board directly in our webpage. We are very appreciative of the commitment shown by Behavioral Health Services Director Ryan Quist and his team for that year, and continuing after, and also with the addition of Tim Lutz. They have proven time and time again their steadfast commitment to ensuring that all of our county's residents are able to assess the necessary behavioral health services and exercise innovativeness to the extent possible in order to do so. None of the Mental Health Board's work would be possible without the work and dedication of the folks identified Jason and Glenda on the screen, who provide administrative assistance and support to the Mental Health Board. As you can see, we are a very busy board, and Mr. Richards and Ms. Bassina are instrumental in making sure that we need, that we have what we need in order to do the work. We are very dedicated to making the mental health system in Sacramento County optimal for the clients that need it the most, and we're appreciative to the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to advise them, oversee that, and advocate for those clients. Thank you to Supervisor Kennedy in his absence, Chair Desmond, and all the members of the Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the appointees that you selected to be on the Mental Health Board, we are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and Dr. Sacco. Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you. Appreciate the presentation, and since that last slide had my former assistant, Glenda, on there, I have to give a big shout-out to Ms. Bassina. She is wonderful to work with, and I'm glad she's proven to be of great value in the capacity in which she's working now with the Mental Health Board. Was very curious in the presentation relative to the mention of ad hoc committees. One of the really important groups that I feel like I've had a little bit of influence in establishing and certainly encouraging over the years is our methamphetamine coalition. And so, I was, my question for you is, has there been, whether it's ad hoc work or free-form discussion at the Mental Health Board, has there been, in your experience, any robust discussion about the intersectionality between that particular substance and temporary-permanent psychosis and its influence on mental health here in Sacramento County? And if not, is that a possible topic that the Mental Health Board might be able to take on, or maybe even assign someone, if there isn't already an assignment, to maybe work collaboratively with the coalition?
I'm happy to take that question, and thank you for raising that issue. What comes to my mind is I'm familiar with that being a robust discussion in the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board space. Up until, well, now, behavior, there's a Mental Health Board, and there's the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the way that those two boards collaborate is by the Mental Health Board having a liaison assignment to that board. We are hoping to increase and grow our collaboration cooperation, especially if the modernization proposal that's coming from the governor does pass. It will require a joining or a marrying of those two boards, known as a Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and I think that there would be a lot more growth and discussion of the topic you're raising, should that go forward. And that is something that we can certainly take back to our board and see if anyone is willing and interested in adding that to their duties.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I would encourage, whether it's under your leadership or others, taking the mantle on at the board, the Mental Health Board, maybe getting your hands on at least some cursory data about the meth epidemic in Sacramento County and how it is being measured and has been measured in terms of its very, very adverse influence on the mental health of our constituents. I don't, I don't, I'm a big believer that it's such a big challenge, a big problem, that it probably deserves very focused attention in both realms in terms of alcohol and substance abuse, board, you know, activities, as well as the Mental Health Board activities. And I just point it out because I think we all know, at least anecdotal, that unlike so many other challenges when it comes to SUD in our community, meth really has proven to be the substance that is, you know, crippling our folks left and right when it comes to their ability to have prolonged mental health. And I just think it needs kind of an all-hands approach, and I certainly would strongly encourage the Mental Health Board to at least have that discussion amongst yourselves about how you might be able to play that integral role.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Hugh?
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize, I just learned of this issue yesterday, so I don't know anything about it other than to start asking questions, and I'm certainly going to seek a briefing on the item. But have you heard anything from our community-based partners relative to the, and I assume it's a mandate from the state, relative to the billing for CPT codes and electronic health records and infield services? There's a transition that's going on? Have you heard...
I'm thinking that's the implementation of CAL AIM that took effect July 1, 2023. I think that Dr. Ryan Quist, who I believe is on Zoom, would be, and maybe Director Lutz, would be most informed at taking that question, but that is something that at the, in the Mental Health Board general meetings, we do have our system partners and other stakeholders come and report how it's faring for them, what concerns they have, and they're, we're able to facilitate a direct dialogue with Behavioral Health Services leadership in order to troubleshoot and make sure that that goes as seamless as possible.
Okay, like I said, I didn't know the details of it, so thank you for tying it to CAL AIM. And so, in those reports that you've heard, does this seem like something that is going to be, it's a wrinkle to be ironed out? Is this something that is going to, because what I've heard is essentially they're having to tap lines of credit and really stay afloat themselves because they can't get things figured out in a timely fashion. And I know it's kind of a timing issue, but, you know, when you're running on a shoestring budget, it can really be, present a problem.
And providing such essential services, too.
Sure.
I think like with any new program that gets rolled out, there may be a little hiccups that happen at first, but from my understanding, that is, it's either been ironed out, or it is in the process of being ironed out, and I'll pass it over to Director Lutz to see if he can help inform our response.
And I certainly don't want to derail the conversation here. I do intend to get briefed on this item, but...
Good, good morning, Supervisor. Still morning. Yes, Tim Lutz, Director Health Services. Dr. Quist is also available via Zoom. This is tied to CAL AIM, and importantly, payment reform. And certainly, we have tried to take as methodical as a process as possible with our providers because this was something that embedded within CAL AIM is a requirement, not an option. So I think locally, what we wanted to do was try and mitigate that natural stress of change and entirely different billing mechanism on our providers. Ninety-plus percent of our service delivery is provider-based within Behavioral Health Services. So understandably, we want to make sure our providers are taken care of, supported. We understand there's a lot of anxiety around what billing's going to look like. We have committed to, very frequent, I know Ryan and his team are pulling first month's billing to compare to last year's billing, to do an apples-to-apples comparison, and then we'll have a first quarter reconciliation with our providers, again, to see, does it look like they're, they're being made whole, or at least being able to support their costs through this changeover. We did specifically increase rates for our providers with the aim of making sure they would be able to see cost recovery.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry, sorry for that tangent, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hugh. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to thank you for that very comprehensive report and for all the work that you do. And I wanted to let you know that we do have some interested parties, so I'm hoping to fill the positions for D4 soon. I know you're, I heard you mention you're hoping to fill some of those positions, so just wanted you to know, we're working on it.
Thank you for that, for your consideration, your attention to that. Yeah, the more, if we have a full board, the more... Yeah, the more, if we have a full board, the more work that we can do. And again, as keep coming up, I think in almost every meeting, there's an issue about mental health and how county can transform and meet the needs.
I know, it's important.
So appreciative, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. Well, I just want to, let me certainly add my, my voice to the chorus of thanks for you. I mean, the board has been obviously very, very active. You have devoted an awful lot of your personal time to these efforts, so I thank you. I, it's, it means a lot to the county, means a lot to me personally, the work you're doing is so important, so thank you for being here today. I did want to, I did have a question, I did have a conversation with both Paul and one of my other appointees, Mr. Cho, I think, as you know, about the Wellness Crisis Response Team Advisory Board. And I know your, your board approved the bylaws, and I just want to ask you a couple of questions about those. Dr. Sacco or Paul, either one, I mean, there are some, there are some specific exclusion criteria for members of, to serve on that advisory body. And this, again, this is the Wellness Crisis Response Team, whose intent is to provide an alternative to law enforcement responses to people experiencing a behavioral health crisis out in the street, something I, I support, having been someone who was in law enforcement and having responded to those kinds of calls without having the expertise, obviously, to do it. But, but it certainly, in some of the exclusion criteria for serving on that advisory body, I mean, I, I understand just intuitively not having someone who's currently involved in law enforcement, but I think those, what I would ask of the Mental Health Board is to reconsider some of those exclusion criteria, because I think not only someone, it excludes anybody who's ever served in law enforcement, it excludes anybody who's a family member, someone who served in law enforcement. I, I think that's too exclusive, Corinne, that's my opinion about this, and I think I'm, I've established myself as someone who tries to bring people together. I think hearing different perspectives is important. So I, I challenge you on that score to maybe reconsider those. I mean, it just seems counterintuitive to me that someone could serve on the Mental Health Board but couldn't serve on this advisory body. I couldn't serve on this advisory body, and I consider myself, myself someone who is definitely someone who is able to understand, you know, I can think outside the cultural status quo, for instance. So I'm not, you can respond if you like, but those are just my concerns, and I just wanted, wanted to pass those along to you.
Yeah, no, thank you for, for bringing that up and really naming that, because it has been chatter, if you will, that's come up. And I think it's important to, to think about that these are open meetings, so anyone can attend the meeting where there's no exclusionary criteria about that. And in the extensive research that our ad hoc work group did and dedicated to this issue and researching how other similar citizen advisory bodies for programs such as Denver Star or, or Kahoots in Oregon, how they're run, they are, there's a purposeful prioritization of those with lived experience, especially if they've had negative experiences with law enforcement during a behavioral health crisis. And so to have a psychologically safe space, that was our intention of having that exclusion criteria. And exclusion may be a very strong word that we do need to go back and reconsider, but I can, as someone who's been involved in the ad hoc work group, as well as pretty close with Behavioral Health Services in the implementation of the program, I can tell you that there have been conversations with law enforcement, working on how do we have a bidirectionality, the functioning of the program. So it's not that their voices are excluded or we're not talking to them, it really is more about the citizen advisory body space. And, and point taken, we can go back and definitely look at that and see if that's something that that advisory body, a subcommittee of the Mental Health Board, is willing to revisit.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And I'll ask, I mean, staff the question, because I, I think that the alternative response, as important as it is, I think to maximize its efficiency, I think we need to have, the county needs to be having discussions, obviously, with law enforcement and with, and with FIRE about, okay, what's the, kind of the best path to do that? And to also identify situations where, hey, both of us may be going out there, I mean, because that is the reality, that's going to happen. Can, maybe I'm looking at either Ann or Eric, I don't see Siobhan here, but can you describe maybe some of those efforts to maybe have, you know, to be having those, are those discussions happening, Eric?
Yes, so Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice, and yes, we've been working with Director Lutz and Dr. Quist to reinitiate some meetings because of the bidirectionality as exactly stated and the input from law enforcement on that.
Okay, and FIRE as well, you know, I think make sure we don't leave them out of the conversation, because they're obviously responding to a lot of these situations as well. And again, my, my objective is to have the most efficient system that gets the help in the best way to the, the highest number of people, right? So we, I think we share the same goal.
Absolutely, and since, since you raised it, I'd like to share that just yesterday afternoon, the Mental Health Board had a site visit of the Community Wellness Response Team's operation at the Behavioral Health Services Division. We're kind of getting away from 2022 and going into our 2023 work, but I will share with you the feedback that we received from that program's coordinators and the, the peer supports that go out on the calls, is that if they're responding to a call, let's say here in downtown Sacramento, parking will be a time barrier for them. They're spending a lot of time trying to find parking because they don't have a marked car, they don't have the, the privilege that FIRE or police would have. So right there is a great example of a conversation that needs to happen.
That's true, right. And that derives from state statute, you know, those, those exemptions, yeah. Well, that, that's a very good example, I, I appreciate that, so. Okay, well, well, thank you for, for the work you're doing.
And also, as a supplement to that, we noted that you specifically mentioned both the family portion of that exclusion and the whoever served portion of that exclusion, and that will be something that we continue to address. We actually had previous conversations about the exclusionary language, and it is subject to some modification based on those discussions.
Thanks. And you know, maybe on Paulianish at times, but I do think that you shouldn't underestimate the power or influence that you have on people in law enforcement to think of things differently as they have, you know, I think more interactions and are educated about really some of these challenges that people experience and the challenges and concerns alternative responders experience as well. So, you know, don't, don't discount that, because I think that's important and can be very powerful, so. Okay, I do, any public comment on this item?
We do, we have at least a couple callers, maybe just one.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco and Paul, for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Can you please transfer the first caller? Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning, Board, my name is Mackenzie Wilson, and I'm an organizer with Decarcerate Sacramento. I really want to, I think I'll start by saying I just hope I get a little leniency the way that the other public commissioners have, because I promise I have a final sentence. I want to uplift the work that the Mental Health Board has been doing, y'all are powerful, and we really give thanks for what you've done. I think today I'm going to focus, and I will email these recommendations to you, but with something that Dr. McIntosh did highlight was the recommendations around meeting compliance with the MAES consent decree. I will be reading directly from the report, and like I said, I will be emailing it to you. I'll start by starting with the fact that it names the two factors primarily determine the number of people in the jail, the number of admissions and the length of stay, meaning that the amount of time a person, that means that it is being driven by the amount of time that people spend incarcerated. And Sacramento County jail rates are higher than almost all other counties that have our population sizes. Nearly 70% of our local jail population on any given day is made up of people who have been booked two or more times. According to the data from the Sacramento Sheriff's Office, people with mental health diagnosis who receive mental health services during incarceration compromise of two-thirds of the population detained in its jails, making our jail one of the largest behavioral health providers in the county, a service that is not designed to provide. The mental health population that enters the Sacramento County, or I'm sorry, the mental health population of Sacramento County enters our jail more often for warrants such as hold and violations as compared to the larger jail population. As of right now, one-third of our jail population in bookings include people with severe mental health crisis, and of those with severe mental illness, 25% of them are screened as homeless, meaning that there's a significant portion of the bookings with complex needs in the community involving housing and mental health services. The recommendations I'm about to read are in line with the American Psychiatric Health, Psychiatric Association and the recommendations are of the American Public Health Association. I really appreciate these, these recommendations, because these are all an alternative to building the mental health jail that we're about to spend a billion dollars on. The first one was approve a care-first, jail-last policy resolution that values a comprehensive continuum of care of individuals with mental health illness, substance use, and co-occurring disorders rather than.
Mackenzie, can you wrap up your comments? You already passed your time.
Okay, for sure, then I'll just name the last, the last one, or there's two, there's two recommendations. One is invest in building and operating a 24-hour assessment and intervention service center in order for law enforcement and first responders, partners to divert people with mental health crisis, behavioral health, and substance needs from incarceration emergency rooms. And the final one is increase the number of subacute care beds in Sac County with an appropriate number of beds being designated specifically for individuals involved in mental health diversion programs. And specifically, it has been estimated that you're going to spend 654. Yeah, I'm done, just, this is the last three sentences.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Okay.
Okay, the next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Greetings, Board Supervisors. Just want to give a shout out and thank you to members of the Mental Health Board who have put together a set of comprehensive recommendations that this board, I hope, is actually taking very seriously and implementing or approving in a formal, like in a formal on-basin. I believe it was already approved, but one of the things that is important to really name is that we need to really shift the culture in particular in how we think about responding to mental health crisis calls away from this, this preconceived and archaic law enforcement narrative that they're always going to be there, that they are a necessary force to respond to mental health crisis calls, when in actuality, the reason that community members actually called for a police-free mental health crisis hotline, as well as the advisory body that doesn't have law enforcement members on that body, is because law enforcement created the situation in the first place by, by killing and murdering loved ones in a mental health crisis call as recently as last year. The only reason that they are excluded from, like, from the advisory body within this, as well as being asked to step back from, like, from responding to mental health crisis calls, is because they don't know how to handle these crises, and they seem not to really want to or have any interest in doing so, as recently is the last sheriff who explicitly stated that to this board. I really, like, think we really need to be focusing, or shifting resources into actual, like, to our other first responders, which are our healthcare workers, particularly addressing the immense staff shortage when it comes to behavioral health workers. And if we actually gave the Health, Health and Human Services Departments increased funding and provide flexible shifts in their hiring so that they can hire more behavioral health specialists and mental health workers, in parity with the sheriff deputies who make hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to do less and less work.
Keon, can you wrap up your comments?
It would be immensely beneficial and actually go a long way to addressing the recommendations that are, that the Mental Health Board has provided.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you. Let's receive and file, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, Item 45, excuse me, is the Sorrento Road and Rezone and Use Permit Project, a community plan amendment, rezone, use permit, and design review for a new four-story office building and warehouse on a 5.4-acre parcel located at 7945 Sorrento Road in the Rio Linda Elverda community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Hello, Jessica.
Hello. Good, good morning, Chair and Board. Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to give you a presentation on the Sorrento Road Rezone and Use Permit. So this project is located at 7945 Sorrento Road, at the intersection of Sorrento Road with West Elverda Road in the Rio Linda Elverda community. The subject property consists of a single parcel, it's about five and a half acres, it's shaped like a long, narrow triangle. So current improvements on the site are minimal. This is looking west from Sorrento Road, and you can see the grain silos, which are empty, they, and then some electric power towers in the back, there is an easement along the south end of the site, and then fencing surrounding. The silos that you see in this picture are expected to remain, and I'll show some design of the proposed development, and you could see how they're integrated in. So the entitlement requested, the reason for the request is that two local contractors wish to use this property as a base of operations. They're looking to put an office and warehouse and related storage and auto repair and other facilities to run their business from here. The reason why they need the entitlements is that the current community plan for the designation for the site is industrial reserve, and the zoning for the site is interim agricultural reserve. And so they need the rezone in order to develop out the site. So the request is to move to a light industrial community plan designation and zoning designation on the site. Also, to develop out like they would like, they are looking to request a use permit to allow a four-story office building. This would exceed the gross floor area of office space for an M1 zone, and so that's part of the request, as well as the design review. And you can see here, this is the community plan land use amendment from industrial reserve to M1, light industrial. And then again, the zoning designation is interim agricultural reserve, and this would also go to light industrial or M1. The environmental document that was prepared for this is a mitigated negative declaration. The 30-day public review period is complete. There were a number of impacts discussed, but the ultimate determination was that there was a less-than-significant impact with the implementation of some mitigation measures. Here's the site exhibit, and I do want to highlight a few items on here. West, or Elver, excuse me, West Elverda is to the right here, so north is facing to the right. They plan to have significant landscaping and a detention basin at the front or the north side of the property, and it's a little hard to see, sorry, and then the silos, which are already there, followed by their office building, and then a warehouse, work yard, another detention pond, and then continuing to work south, the remainder of the property would remain grassland and open as is. I also want to point out that the site improvements do require some improvements to the roadways, so there would be curb gutter sidewalk on Elverda Boulevard, and then there would be additional, additional paving and gutter along Sorrento Road, and then there would be a bulb out at the end of Sorrento Road. I believe there was a public comment asking about access to an equestrian facility that's to the west across the railroad tracks. That would be maintained, and staff actually believes this will improve the access to that site.
If I could. Excuse me, yes, Supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I appreciate you bringing this up, and this was brought to my attention yesterday, but I think it's more than just access, I think it's also safety. So in terms of the, the turning movements that, especially turning movements for folks that are trailering horses, so maybe you can speak to those improvements that maybe you were just about to finish that list before I interrupted, but could you speak to the safety concern specifically?
Yeah, so I think the safety concerns are coming in and out from West Elverda, because it is a very quick road. The, the project itself is not going to include any sort of, like, right turn pocket or anything like that. It will improve this little stretch here and provide a little more shoulder for someone who is coming in from the west to make that right turn. for someone who is coming in from the west to make that right turn onto Sorrento. There is also some discussion with the Western Area Power Association, WAPA, that is actually to the east of this site that shares the Sorrento access on potentially coordinating some additional improvements to Sorrento, and that would also probably include some improvements to the left turn on West Alberta. There's nothing finalized yet, but that discussion is ongoing.
In terms of the process going forward, should it be approved today, what would be in place or expected in terms of ongoing review to make sure that visibility as it relates to ingress and egress and turning movements is not going to be somehow impaired? So how would that be addressed?
You're talking from ingress and egress from West Alberta?
Yes. Well, what I'm speaking to specifically is there's a concern about visibility that's in the correspondence that we all have in front of us. So how will planning staff, either just plain administratively or by other review means, ensure that visibility is going to be acceptable so that it doesn't threaten any kind of safety as it relates to access and turning movements?
Yeah.
Supervisor Serna, Todd Smith, Planning Director chiming in on this one. As Jessica mentioned, there will be furniture improvements on both Alberta Road and Sorrento Road such that those roadways, at least on the half section, are widened. Ultimately, when we, not just planning staff, but SIPs, Site Improvements and Permits Section, and our Department of Transportation folks are reviewing the improvement plans as those come in for eventual review by the county, we have to make sure that those improvement plans are compliant with the county site improvement standards, which includes a check for, I believe, visibility and any potentially unsafe circumstances.
Including landscaping, I would assume?
Correct. We want to make sure landscaping isn't going to be screening any potential line of side issues.
Line of side issues.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on from the site plan, I'm going to move on to some of the exhibits. This is the warehouse that will be sort of at the center of the property. And then this is the office exhibit. These are elevations of the office, and then also some improvements that will go in and around the silos. The response to this project has been overwhelmingly positive. The Design Review Advisory Committee was, we actually put enthusiastic on this slide, and it was true. They were very appreciative of the novel design and also the nod to the agrarian uses in and around the area. They also were comfortable with the inclusion of company logos on the silos, and so they are recommending that the board find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. The Rio Linda-Alvera Community Planning Advisory Council also met. We did only have two members in attendance, but they were also in favor. They did vote to recommend that the board approve the requested entitlements. Oh, I'm sorry, two members of the public attended. So we did have a vote from the council that they did recommend. They also echoed a lot of the design appreciation that the DrAC had. And then no additional comments, other than the one asking about the roadway improvements have been received from staff or by staff. And so project analysis, we did find, or we found that you could find, that this project could be consistent with the general plan, community plan and zoning code as conditioned, that it is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses. There's no significant environmental concerns. And the proposed community plan amendment and rezone to light industrial is a logical progression in the development of this portion of the Rio Linda-Alvera community. And then there are a few key conditions of approval that are highlighted up here. And then finally, our staff recommendation on this project today is approval, and these are the action items should you so choose. And with that, I end my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. I think we have the applicant's agent here for questions, and if necessary, and they would need to be sworn in, correct?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and swear everyone in now. So if any of you are planning to speak on this item or the next item, I'll go ahead and swear you in now, if you wish. So please raise your right hand and the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you were about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement I have been sworn.
I almost said good morning, but it's actually afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Jessica, my name is Richard Rosamovich. I'm with Area West Engineers. We're the applicant's engineers and also representing the applicant. I have been sworn. Our business address is 7478 Sandalwood Drive in Citrus Heights, California. Thank you, Jessica, and also Nick Dobrnek. We spent a lot of time on this project. I'm very happy with the results. We have an architect and two local contractors that are going to move their business from downtown Rio Linda into this facility, and I think it's going to be a great asset to the community and the folks that are actually going to work at the facility. And to explain some of the issues for Supervisor Serna, we did spend a lot of time with transportation. The area on West Alberta are designed for the ultimate development. It'll be two lanes on our side, bike lane, deceleration lane, and then as you come onto Sorrento, you'll also have a expanded intersection. We did talk to the energy folks, I think it was a couple of months ago, and they recognized that they have a problem, and they wanted to maybe do something jointly with our project. And I recommend it to them and to our property owners that we don't want to do something jointly. Usually when you have other folks involved, one wants to go real quickly, the other one doesn't want to go real quickly. But we did offer our services that if they wanted us to continue with the ultimate expansion on the south side of West Alberta, we'd be more happy to help them. The issue is, it's always the budget. So the energy folks, they've got to go back to the people that actually have a checkbook and authorize them to do that. Other than that, I have nothing to add. I think the staff report speaks for itself. We recognize and accept the proposed conditions of approval, and with that, I hopefully that you approve the project as submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it. Any other public comment on this item?
No, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, when I first saw this application, I thought, oh my gosh, this is spot zoning. Why are they putting an office building out in the middle of nowhere? And then as you dig into it and see that it meets both the county's vision for the area, and just I really want to commend the applicant on the architectural design and incorporation of the existing agricultural silos that, you know, aren't being put to use necessarily, but are being maintained in order to preserve the aesthetic. I think that was really cool. And I appreciate that kind of being carried through from all of the review bodies that heard this and had similar sentiments. The only question I have, and it's just went out of curiosity, is the detention basins, both on, I guess it would be the north and south ends of the parking lots, are those intended to act as bio swales in lieu of traditional drainage, or are they simply for high-water events to hold water from runoff?
To answer your question, yes. They're going to do two things. One is for the treatment, the LID, and also for water detention to reduce any of the drainage coming off of our property.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
When I first saw this, I thought, well, that's an interesting shaped lot and a very appropriate use for something in that area. It seems like over time I've learned that in the rural areas where we have industrial meeting up with residential, it can get challenging, but this is, this makes perfect sense, and I support it, and I, so I'll just go ahead and move approval.
Second. And, Mr. Chair, before we take a vote, I'll just note that I think we all are very well aware that in our contemporary rhetoric these days, we often find ourselves referring to breaking down silos. So this is one case where we're going to go the other direction.
Touche. Please vote.
Chip your waitress.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, thank you.
And then for item 46, this is a use permit amendment and design review for a new parking lot at an existing congregate care facility located at 5420 Laurel Hills Drive, and this is in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. The environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, good afternoon, Kimber.
Good afternoon. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Kimber Gutierrez. I'm a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be presenting the River Oak Center for Children Parking Lot Use Permit Amendment and Design Review. The project manager for this project is Emma Carrico, so just wanted to say thank you to Emma for getting this to the finish line, and she's here if there are any questions that I cannot answer. So the project site consists of two parcels, one 2.75-acre parcel on the north side of Laurel Hills Drive that contains the River Oak Center for Children campus, and a half-acre parcel on the south side of Laurel Hills Drive that is currently vacant and would contain a proposed parking lot. The subject parcels have a general plan land use designation of commercial office. The zoning designation for both parcels is business and professional office. Surrounding land uses include the Laurel Rough School to the north, medical offices to the south, and single-family and multifamily residential to the east and west. The River Oak Center does have an extensive history of entitlements and construction, so I'm just going to walk us through this. On December 12, 1963, a use permit was granted for construction of a nursery and residential care center for children. Between December of 1989 and July 2005, the River Oak Center for Children acquired the existing care center facilities on the north parcel and two parcels south of Laurel Hills Drive, so the subject vacant parcel that I mentioned in the previous slides, and then the parcel west adjacent to that. On May 23 of 2007, the board approved a use permit amendment that allowed the current configuration of the care facility campus and set the minimum required parking for the campus at 73 spaces. However, a total of 77 spaces were provided after the redevelopment. In 2013, River Oak sold the west adjacent property to the subject vacant parcel, which contained and still contains an office building and a lot with 43 parking spaces. This did reduce the center's parking, such that the facility no longer complied with the required 73 spaces. However, shortly after the sale, River Oak did begin leasing the parking back from the buyer for use by visitors of the center. In 2020, River Oak submitted this current use permit amendment request to develop a parking lot on the vacant parcel on the south side of Laurel Hills Drive to remedy the non-conforming parking situation. And then lastly, there have been a couple of code violations for overgrown vegetation. However, all of those cases have been remedied and closed. The applicant is requesting a use permit amendment to allow a new parking lot with 27 spaces for an existing congregate care facility on approximately 0.52 acres in the BP zoning district, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with our countywide design guidelines. Here's the site plan. So as you can see, the parking lot is on the southern vacant parcel, so south side of the Laurel Hills Drive. As previously mentioned, the parking lot would contain 27 parking stalls. Ingress and egress would be provided via an existing paved driveway that runs along the western property line of the subject parcel. And the lot design incorporates landscape planters along Laurel Hills Drive frontage as well as both interior sides. And then 13 new trees would be planted within those planters that I just discussed. And then there is an existing grove of mature trees on the south end of the parcel, including several oak species, which would be retained and protected. The proposed project was heard by the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC on April 20 of 2022. The CPAC did recommend the board approve the proposed project. The project was also heard by the Design Review Advisory Committee on August 25 of 2022, and the DrAC did find that the proposed project could be in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And then the proposed project was also heard by the Planning Commission on June 12 of this year, and the commission did recommend the board approve the proposed project. So staff has reviewed, the project has found it consistent with the general plan, community plan and zoning code. It got unanimous support at all of the advisory bodies, and therefore staff is recommending approval, recommend the board take the following actions, which is to recognize the exempt status of the request of the under section 15311B of the California Environmental Quality Act, approve the use permit amendment, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Kimber. I know we have Mr. Earl, correct? You've already been sworn, available for questions if necessary. Do we have any public comment on the item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, well, Kimber, I thank you for your, for staff's work on this. I'm very supportive, and I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, well, that concludes our morning business, so we will recess to closed session with a few litigation cases and a labor case to discuss, and be back here at 2:00 PM. Okay, it's 2:18, and we'll call the afternoon session to order. I'd ask Clerk to please call the roll to establish quorum.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost, excuse me, Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, let's start with item 47.
Okay, so did you want to do item 48 first, so to give Supervisor Frost time to come in?
That's fine. You know what? That's fine.
With that, okay, yeah, because you do need a two-thirds vote on that one.
And it's, we're still.
So we'll do item 48. This is a request for review of hearing officer's decision in the matter of the Gi Angel Massage.
Okay, and I believe our county council has information?
Yes, we received notice from the appellant that he is dropping the appeal. A signed message from the appellant is attached to the board materials, and we would need a motion to drop this item.
Okay, Chair will move.
Message from the appellant is attached to the board materials and.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, so then we'll go back to 47.
Yes, and so for item 47, this is a resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property for the South Watt Avenue Improvement Projects. For the property owners that are listed on the agenda, property owners 1 through 12, I'm going to go ahead and read the APN numbers. Property 1 is APN number 0650051022. Property 2, 0640072019. Property 3, 0640072014. Property 4, 0640080045. Property 5, 0640032006. Property 6, 0620080063. Property 7, 0620080071. Property 8, 0620080073. Property 9, 0620060033. Property 10, 0030, excuse me, 0620030012, and Property 11, 0620030022, and the final property, 12, 0640072008.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, here.
Good afternoon, Chair, board, Chair Desmond and other members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager, Acquisitions Section for the Real Estate Division. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager, Acquisition Section for the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for 12 resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's South Wad Avenue Improvement Project. Before I get into the bulk of my comments today, I'd like to discuss a very recent development regarding resolution number 12 for Don Lee, Don Jack Lee and Linda Ling Lee as trustees of the Lidl Living Trust at 8865 Florin Road. The owner has provided necessary signed acquisition documents to the Real Estate Division, and the county has fully executed the necessary documents. Therefore, I would ask the board to drop the resolution number 12 again for Don Jack Lee and Linda Ling Lee as trustees of the Lidl Living Trust at 8865 Florin Road. Thank you. The purpose of the project is.
We can take that action now?
Yeah.
Let's try it.
Second.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of the project is to modify South Wad Avenue from State Highway 16, also known as Jackson Road, at the north to Florin Road at the south. This is a distance of approximately three miles. The project will widen South Wad Avenue from two to four lanes and construct complete street improvements, including landscape medians, turn lanes, buffered bike lanes, sidewalks, curb ramps, traffic signal modifications, and pavement repair and resurfacing. The project will provide improved bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities, as well as congestion-relieving enhanced safety and aesthetic improvements within the corridor. Of the 74 necessary acquisitions for the project, 12 properties are the subject of this board's item. At this time, I'd like to display attachment 3 here to this round hearing, which is the list of properties of the individual property necessary easements and the corresponding easement areas as shown in square feet. Maybe I need to reorient. Okay, page 1 there. Okay, first, Valley Real Estate 84 LLC located at 0 Florin Road, assessors parcel number The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Number 2, Kamjalit Singh Bhar trustee located at 8899 Florin Road, assessors parcel number The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public facilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the property. Number 3, Lucic Family Revocable Trust located at 8895 South Wad Avenue, assessors parcel number 0640072014. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement across portions of the property. Number 4, Abdul Kayum and Naved Ikbal located at 7040 Bandi Road, assessors parcel number 0640080045. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Number 5, Vincent Pierce and Uliana Pierce located at 8936 Tokay Lane, assessors parcel number 0640032006. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Number 6, Hunt Revocable Living Trust located at 5800 South Wad Avenue, assessors parcel number 0620080063. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public facilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Item number 7, Hunt Investment Properties located at 5750 South Wad Avenue, assessors parcel number 0620080071. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Item number 8, SWCA 8870 Fruit Ridge Road LLC located at 8870 Fruit Ridge Road, assessors parcel number 0620080073. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the affected property.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I don't know if you wanted to change your chart as you.
Oh, thank you, Supervisor. So there we go, better. Thank you. Okay, number 9, TA Watt LLC located at 0 Florin, Elk Grove Florin Road, APN 0620060033. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portions of the property. Number 10, Holt of California California Corporation located at 8981 Osage Avenue, assessors parcel number 0620030012. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and an easement for temporary construction needed for the project across portions of the affected property. Number 11, Holt of California California Corporation, this one located at 8900 Fruit Ridge Road, assessors parcel number 0620030022. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across portion of the affected property. And then lastly, Lidl Living Trust, which we have dismissed the resolution necessity just moments ago. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the various easement interests I just mentioned and that are displayed on attachment 3. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary easement interest in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolutions of necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with owner contact histories. Notices of intention to seek approval of the resolutions necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard mail at least 15 days in advance of this hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties I mentioned, or other, I or other project team members currently present are here and available to address those concerns and questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Don't see any board members queued up to speak. Do we have any public comment on any of the 11 items?
We do have one person in chambers. Mr. Todd Thompson.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm the CFO here representing Holt of California, and I just wanted to get on record that we're working with the county diligently to come to, you know, final terms and conditions with these two properties. And we do not desire to have it go through the eminent domain process. It's just time kind of ran out on us, and I think we're pretty close. It relates to both parcels, both for the permanent and temporary, not really value, it's just some logistical stuff as it relates to the raw property we have, and then also our business operations for the other parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment by phone?
We do not have anyone on the phones.
Supervisor Hume.
I just want to say I appreciate the speaker being here in chambers. We certainly seek to have willing seller, willing buyer. That's always easier, and so without, I'd move the item. Do I need to read these into?
Do we have to take each one separately, I believe?
We do.
I'll second ahead of time.
So this one's on property, was that on property 10? I'm sorry.
Well, why don't, why don't we start from the top?
Yeah, okay.
Let's just do that. Is that okay with you? Supervisor Hume?
Sure, so I'll move authorize eminent domain actions for the real property, starting with APN 0650051-0022.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
And then I will also move authorizing eminent domain proceedings for the real property, APN 0640072019.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
And then also authorize, move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for the real property, a portion of APN 0640072014.
Second.
Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of the property of APN 0640080045. Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of property 0640032006.
Second.
Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of the property, APN 0620080063. Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of the property, APN 0620080071.
Second.
Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of the property, APN 0620080073.
Second.
Move to authorize eminent domain proceedings for a portion of the property, APN 0620060033.
Second.
And move to authorize eminent domain proceedings, portion of the property, APN 0620030012.
Second.
And move to authorize eminent domain proceedings, portion of the property, APN 0620030022.
Second. Okay, includes the item. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Peter. All right, so now we'll move on to item 49.
Yes, this is your own rank's appointments to boards and commissions?
And I think we'll take up the NACO item. Supervisor Kennedy has requested that we continue the regional water authority appointments.
Okay, we'll continue that one, regional water authority to September 12, and then we do need action for NACO.
Okay, well, I'm currently the board representative, and I'd like to continue if that's, if that's will of the board.
Please. Yeah, second, if that's a motion.
Okay, that's a motion, yes.
Do we want to include your alternate?
Yes, I include Supervisor Frost, continue, serve as alternate.
I'm listening. I'm happy to.
Okay. So we have a motion for Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost as the alternate.
Okay. Ross? Ms. Ross, do you want to cast your vote? Unanimous vote.
Okay, now our board nominations, number 50.
Okay, so for your nominations, on item 50, you're continuing to September 12. Community Review Commission, Sacramento County Youth Commission continuing to September 26. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to October 17, the Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, GALT, Arno Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Sylvan Cemetery District. And your matters today, we have the Assessment Appeals Board.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Manaz Kazari and continue the remainder to October 17.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Desmond?
Continue to September 12.
Public Financing Authority on the County of Sacramento Metro-Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District?
Chiefs recommend reappointing Matthew Kiesling and Michael Whipple.
Great. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board?
Chiefs recommend reappointing Christian Landeverde, nominate Germael Taylor, and nominate Diana Burdick, continue remainder to October 17.
Great. Sacramento Environmental Commission?
Chiefs recommend reappointing Laura Nickerson, continue remainder to October 17.
Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. I do have a note here that all districts are continuing to October 17.
Yes, please.
Are we still on with that? Okay, great. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, so we'll move to our county executive comments.
No comments today, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and then I'll turn to my colleague, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this came up during a briefing last week with our regular briefing in the 1st District with LaChelle Dozier and her staff with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And one of the items that came to our attention is that the clock is ticking on a TCC grant for $17 million that will go towards the new RT Light Rail Station that will serve the Dos Rios Marisol Village area. This is the area in, along the north part of the 16th and 12th Streets corridors, and we're at a point now, it's my understanding, we're at a point that we're looking at any kind of creative way to not lose the 17 million. And one of the alternatives that I suggested out loud in the course of brainstorming was looking at the bonding capacity that we might have at the county, or the city, or both, maybe as a way to bridge funding for this. In other words, it would be very regretful if we lost the 17 million, $17 million grant for that element of the project. It's one of the latter part of the, parts of this transformative aspects of the River District area, and I think we're all very well aware of just how well the Marisol Village project has really ended up, and so it would be, again, very regretful if we had to return the 17 million. So the question at hand is, can we use county bonding capacity? And could we, you know, show a path forward that would be acceptable to the grantor so that we don't lose those funds? So I'd just ask that, I'm guessing Mr. DeFonte might at least have a conversation with the powers that be at SHRA to explore that further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, I will, I'll conclude with, I'm going to adjourn in memory today of Supervisor Gary Sandy, Yolo County Supervisor. Supervisor Sandy passed away peacefully at the age of 68 on Thursday, August 17, 2023, after a year-long battle with liver cancer. Gary served on the Woodland City Council and as Woodland Mayor before retiring in 1996. He was then elected to the Yuba Community College Board in 2012 and served for two terms before being elected to the Yolo County Board of Supervisors in 2018. He was reelected in 2022 after running unopposed. In April, Gary was honored by Woodland Community College during the inaugural Woodland Community College Eagles of Excellence Celebration. He was recognized for his decades of public contributions, which have spanned higher education and regional politics. Supervisor Sandy will be remembered as a loving husband to his devoted wife, Mary Vixie Sandy, and his three children. His dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to making a positive impact on the lives of others will be remembered for generations to come, and I adjourn our session today in memory of Supervisor Gary Sandy.